Well, I'll call upon a select board meeting to order on Thursday, May twenty-ninth, twenty-fourteen, a little after seven PM for the agenda approval, approval of the minutes five-eight-fourteen. Warrants, mail, full business, Comcast proposal for telephone consolidation with assistance, town truck purchase and culvert material purchase and blacktop, Girl Scouts Community Service Announcement, we'll talk more about that when we get there. Sid Smithers, Planning Commission, town sponsor, volunteer pickup and payment for motor vehicles, machinery, Mike Thatcher on VCR CDVG grant to develop a plan to address flooding problems in Pono in mobile home park areas, Town Office bond vote discussion for a request of Town Office Committee and discuss pay raises for all personnel.
Come on, let's try to keep moving.
Okay, any further thing to be added? All those in favor say aye. Okay, approval of the minutes of five-eight-fourteen.
Tomo.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I'm going to withdraw my motion.
I didn't have a chance to look at it, so...
Well, you make the motion.
Oh, can I? Okay, alright. I'm not going to vote on this stuff, okay?
Uh, any other discussion on them? All those in favor say aye.
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 Of Dane, yes.
Okay. Warrants?
You guys compare them.
Uh, this is for accounts payable ending five-thirty-fourteen in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. This is for accounts payable ending five-twenty-three-fourteen in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and six cents. This is accounts payable ending five-sixteen-fourteen in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twelve cents. This is payroll ending five-twenty-three-fourteen in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. And this is payroll ending five-sixteen-fourteen in the amount of five thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. What's your pleasure on these guys? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I had Dane from number three.
No, it isn't done yet. We're doing it right now.
Oh, you had that one?
Yeah, that's the one I pulled out. Okay. Basically, we probably won't be able to prove this. Okay, town of Pono payroll report ending five-thirty-fourteen in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. There's two payroll in here. One is for me, for my zoning administration, and one is for Ron Bizan for his selectment position.
I move, I don't have a problem with that, with you guys folks on that.
I want to make clear, I'll tell it to the public, so they know.
But I just want that to be known, that's all. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. I need a motion to...
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Absentions, or... I don't have any trouble saying aye. I'll say aye. Because I made it clear what it was.
Yeah.
As long as people know what we're voting on, I don't have a problem. That's just so we could pass it to folks. Otherwise, it would have been, everybody's payroll would have been hung up this week. Let's see, in the mail. We have a notice of intent to sell Barber's Pond Mobile Home Park. Basically, it's a letter informing the people upstate that the park is up for sale. And they have to notify the people that's in the park, so they're following the official procedures to do that. There's a notice for bloodborne pathogens training compliance. Deborah Berg Occupational Health RN will hold a bloodborne presentation on Monday, June sixteenth, at seven PM. Seven PM at the Pono Valley Fire Department, June sixteenth. This training session is free and offered by the TVFD to Pono employees, staff that are likely to be exposed to potential infectious bodily fluids, including first aid responders, maintenance personnel, janitorial staff. Any person assigned to clean up bodily fluids after an industrial accident. Other employees can receive the same training for awareness purposes, so they understand that they should not touch blood or bodily fluids, and they understand to whom they should report a spill of blood or bodily fluids, so it can be cleaned up correctly. Hepatitis shot series will be available also for charge. We have a letter from a concern, Edison, to do with the cemetery on Jackson Cross Road. The fence around it is in need of repair. I think in the past, we repaired that several times, so... And by state law, the Select Board, the legislative body, is responsible for maintaining cemeteries that no one else does, so...
That's a probable offense. Along the edge of the road.
This is to advise you that the fence around the cemetery on Jackson Cross Road is in need of repair. I mean, closing copies of the state statutes to facilitate this. What's the board's pleasure? Should we have our road foreman go look at it? Do what we can to repair?
I did get a complaint about the brush on the... On the left side, that the brush is alongside there. Matter of fact...
It was from your uncle.
Okay. Alright, so take a look at it, Casey, while you're there, okay?
We're going to have David in there, because he has to get up them big limbs hanging down.
Yeah, I guess it's... I guess it's...
Well, what I'm saying is, a motion for our road foreman to go look at it.
Make a motion, have Casey look at it and bring back a suggestion.
If it takes more, if it takes more than a few dollars to solve this, where the crew can't solve it, then come back and tell us.
Yeah.
They get a second today?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to try to move you guys along, because we've got a long journey tonight. We have a letter from the Elks in Bennington that are a pleasure to invite someone from Select Board member or others to their presentation with an American flag at the Elks. And let's begin. The ceremony will be held on Sunday, June eighth, at the Bennington Elks Lodge on Washington Avenue. Will begin at one PM. The purpose of this service is to honor our country's flag and to celebrate the anniversary of its birth. Students of the area will be performing musical selections, presenting a program about our flag. It will be a brief ceremony to honor our flag, the men and the women of our armed services. And they hope that one of us can make it. Be hosting a picnic afterwards, so... If somebody can do that on the board, or I would say, please do, it's Sunday, June eighth, and it's at one PM.
Nelson, back to the cemetery issue. Did you see my memo in there regarding the North Pono headstones?
We'll get to it.
I just put it with that one.
You've got it with the one with...
Jackson Cross.
Oh, did you put it with the Jackson Cross?
Yeah, I put it there, just because it's cemetery-related.
I was reading the statute, didn't go far enough. Hey, North Pono Cemetery, there's a number of stones that have been tipped over, or tipped over just through the snow and ice and other things through the years. A while back, we had somebody come in and look at stones. I don't remember. Got it years ago.
Years ago.
Because we had to patch them and stuff.
Some of them don't look like they're, um...
Broken or any...
Armed.
They just need backup?
They need to be put back on their flat stone.
I think years ago, we found someone that could put some stone together, and we epoxy'd some of them together. Remember that?
Yes, I do.
They went through the cemeteries and set them up the best they could, and done some work on them. I don't know who to get at this point.
There's a couple people in Bennington that do it.
Okay.
I think Mahar does it, and Shay also does it.
Okay.
Yeah, we should...
Well, let's find out what it is.
How can we do an inventory of what we're talking about here? She's talked about North Pono, there's a number of other cemeteries. We're going to do this?
You'll see it when you go there.
Well, I think you have to have the, before you touch any of them, you have to have the permission of the family.
Yeah, we found that out last time.
Because we had a farmer selectman working on them with another guy, and they were told to get the hell out of there.
Yep.
Leave them stones alone.
Yeah, well, we have... There's a...
But there is something I'd like to mention on the North Pono Cemetery. The flagpole was moved down to the front, which may be an easier location or whatever, but I had quite a few constituents call me and tell me that that was wrong, because that cemetery land was donated by the Arbors. There's a memorial to the veterans up at where the old flagpole was, and that's where the Arbors' stones are. And they also donated the two acres that sit at the cemetery, so they didn't think it was right that they weren't, you know, to be... Because if people go to the memorial or something, they're going to look, and there's the people who donated the property for the cemetery. So I said, well, I'll mention it.
Yeah, my understanding was that it was moved because of all the trees and the brush that was up there, and the flags were getting torn up every time there was a windstorm, so they moved it.
And the trees around the neighboring property, so cutting the trees back would be getting into involving somebody else's trees.
Well, I could probably get some permission from that landowner.
I don't know the whole area. All I know is it was so far up on the hill there, it was hard to maintain. That's why the flag got ripped up every two months.
Yeah, well, I think what happened was the flowers that normally get planted up there weren't planted up there because the flagpole was down below. So the memorial, the stone doesn't have flowers around it, and neither does Arbor's have flowers on theirs. So we need to correct that for sure, get the flowers planted.
I'll leave that up to you two fellows. I think you're from that area down there, and I think that if you think...
We can get it done.
Find out what the people down there are really saying, and if you think that needs to get moved, we'll move it. I mean, I'll go with it. I mean, whether we done it once or not...
Well, I know that they...
I mean, it isn't too steep. Nelson, you and I hiked up that hill.
Many times. And the real question comes down to how we maintain the pole and maintain the flag if it's up there. Let me talk to the neighbor, see if I can get them to allow us to cut some trees back if we're going to do something up there.
Or whatever you need to do. I don't want to make any waves out.
Yeah, but let me find out. I do know that you talked to the Cemetery Association, and they didn't have a problem with where the pole went, but I don't think they knew about the memorial. They did talk about Arbor's, and the flowers had to be planted at Arbor's grave, but that, you know...
Okay.
So we need to look at what we need to do.
If it needs to be corrected, I'll go along with it.
We'll do what we have to do.
Whatever you have to do, okay? I'll go along with that.
Yeah, I'll talk to the president of that association and others.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on. The people that wanted to use the park for roller derby have sent forth their insurance, and their insurance was approved by our agency as covering what we needed. So we're back to the question of, are we okay with it being used for that?
Have we heard any issues?
I haven't heard anybody say anything.
Tonight was the first night that I saw them using it. We figured that's why you were late.
Well, no, yeah, we're down there. Yeah, roller skating. I've been roller skating, alright. But anyways, I did have some people say they had a few questions on it. What it really pertains to, I, you know, I'm not going to get into it, just was that there it was, and traffic and so on, but to answer that, I did ask... Cross around town.
Peter.
Peter Offkins?
Peter. Okay. And he had no problem, you know. So that's up to you, you know.
I guess, here's what I'll look for. Again, I want to try to move this along tonight. Let's take a motion to authorize them to do it for a year.
Okay.
And then if we hear anything, we'll address it again. Can we do that? Got a motion? Get a second? All those in favor say aye.
I'm glad to see myself...
Something going on.
Yeah. With our property anyway, but something's...
Okay. We have a request from the listers to, they're awaiting the record, recorded documents needed to finalize and file the grant list abstract, and will not make the June fourth filing deadline. So they're requesting signatures on the attached request for extension letter to be Mr. Johnson, Director of Vermont Department of Taxes. So they're looking for an extension of thirty days before filing our grant list. What's your pleasure? They make a motion to sign this, and then we can discuss it a little bit if you want, or... We need to extend it. We need to file a grant list, and we're not ready, so we have to...
Well, we want to talk about it, right? Tomo.
Second.
Okay, now you're... What's, is there a discussion on this?
We want to say, yeah.
Well, I would, you know, it says here, awaiting recorded documents. Do we know what recorded documents they're waiting on? Are they waiting on something from upstate again, or are they...
No, within.
Oh, so it's something that's, we need to get a collection of our recorded documents? Okay. That answers my question. Any other questions?
Well, it's requested anyway from the listers anyhow, correct?
Well, if you want, you can request, get an answer from them, you want.
No, no, but they're requesting that, so...
Yeah, and we made a motion.
I don't have a problem with, I mean, it's their program.
Yep, well, we have to file a grant list at taxes, so...
Well...
You don't want to set them this year.
Listen, if they need thirty days...
I don't know what the reason is, but I don't like extensions on anything, but I guess if they got a legitimate reason, well, we'll have to give them an extension.
We have to do it.
That's all I got to say.
They can't do it without the documents.
Yeah, I was going to say, they can't fill the forms out if they don't have them, right?
Right.
They have to put in who the owners are and everything else. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a notice of resignation from our auditor, Mr. Shields. Due to, basically, as effective with receipt of this notice, I will be resigning my position as a town upon auditor. Term expires March twenty-fifteen. Health issues have overtaken my ability to serve in this position. Okay? And basically, Linda checked upstate and had a posting. She posted this, right?
Two legal postings.
Okay, there's a vacancy of the board auditors. Complete the remaining term of Ray Shields. Term to expire March twenty-fifteen. Please forward a letter of interest to the Pono Board of Selectmen. We do have somebody that has applied, and they have spoken with our current auditors, and our current auditor wrote us a letter. They would like to recommend Dave Adams for the open town auditor position. They have spoken at length with David and believe he will be a great asset to the town of Pono. So David Adams is here tonight. Do you wish to say anything?
It's just that the position's empty, and it's an opportunity to step up and do what's right here and help the town when there's... You don't have any other...
I didn't see any in his stack.
Okay, well, if I'm the only person that is in the whole town that's willing to do it, I'm stepping up.
Okay.
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard.
And I thank you, thank the board for having some faith in me that I'll be able to help out.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Bill. Yes, thanks, Bill. Yeah. We need a motion to accept the resignation.
Oh, I guess we accepted that he left, and that was that.
I make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion to accept the resignation.
Would regret?
Would regret, yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we'll restate the motion that we made earlier, we basically all agree upon.
Right.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Another... Correct, thank you.
Okay, we have no grants this year to do with paving or culverts, and we'll be talking to the road foreman more about that when he gets up here. Okay, we have a letter from our Vermont Computer Sales and Service person that works for the town in helping put things in. He has basically talked about cut over Comcast phone service at the town office, firehouse transfer station, also BTCSS will check phone wiring for problems at the town office. Remove all the old unused wires from the inside and outside of the building. This does not include phone drops from telephone poles. The building, this must be done by Fairpoint Communication. All work will be done on a time and material basis and will not exceed the price of five hundred dollars. Has Comcast got back to us yet?
No, I don't see the individual here this evening, so I think we're going to have to table that again.
Yeah, I was going to say, you might want to move to table this until we know what Comcast is really doing.
I move to do that.
Got a motion to table? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a Vermont Agent of Transportation Department of Motor Vehicle, single vehicle for Scott Lee Morrison to do with excess weight permit. Our road foreman has signed it. What's your pleasure?
Move, we sign it.
Second.
Okay, all the forms are here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it takes us through the mail. Comcast proposal check off. I'd like to go to the Girl Scouts first. We'll come back to the Casey, because he's going to do his monthly report at the same time, so wait a little bit. Girl Scouts Community Service Announcement. My understanding is they helped plant the flowers around the town this year and did a very good job, both with the entrance and if you looked outside here and elsewhere, it was very good. Yeah, and, you know, I wish to thank them, as I'm sure the board does as a whole, and we appreciate their help in the community, and looks great.
Can we send them a thank you?
Yeah, we should send a thank you, and Linda, do you have anything else to add to that?
I think it would be appropriate to acknowledge the girls by giving them some sort of gift certificate. I know last year, the seniors were given a fruit basket for their help and...
I know that was, there was a tag sale this weekend. Was that for the Girl Scouts as well?
This was a fundraiser.
For a fundraiser?
Fundraiser.
If they're trying to do a fundraiser, I wouldn't be negative...
Just a little something to...
Negative to give them a little something to help what they're trying to do, you know. I don't know what the board would recommend for that, but that, you know, versus sending them, you know...
No, I think that would just help them.
They're trying to raise some.
I don't know how much. I don't want to act too cheap, and I don't want to act too, you know, too far out, but twenty-five dollars? Does that sound like what we would have given a bouquet of flowers? Is that too little?
Today, probably.
Yeah, that's...
Can you go with at least fifty?
Okay.
Because he doesn't want to sound too cheap, but I...
Well, no, but I just don't know. I'm trying to find, no, I'm trying to find out what we did last year, and I don't want to exceed that. That's where I'm coming from.
Well, yeah, the fruit baskets, the fruit baskets, it's in there.
Fifty dollars last year, I want it to continue to that.
Yeah, and I think that's...
Does that make sense?
That makes sense. And I think fifty dollars or even a little more would be sensible to me.
Make a motion, we send them seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
Got a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. Okay, and again, thank you very much. Rest of these, I'll have to... Sid, you want to come up and talk about the Planning Commission? I'm trying to pick what I hope to be not long...
No, it'll be very brief.
Thanks.
Ronnie, good evening. My name is Sid Smithers. I'm chairman of the Planning Commission, and at its last meeting, the Planning Commission voted to request the Board of Selectment institute a voluntary program of collection of unneeded motor vehicles and machinery in town. I've talked with Hank Sayers at Sayers Auto Wrecking, and Joe Apken, and George Apken and Son. Both of those companies would be willing to be called upon to come and pick up on a voluntary basis automobiles or other machinery that is in town and no longer needed by the property owner. They do pay for this metal. We would think that the town, if we're going to institute this program, should have a supply of, a form of bill of sale, which is required to transfer title to the item, or if the vehicle is titled, you're supposed to sign the back of the title, but certainly some of the vehicles in town are probably not titled. They pay two, three hundred dollars per vehicle, and it's a way for a property owner to make a buck and clean up their yard if they wish to do so. And I don't think it would be heavy lifting for the board to institute this program, maybe have it twice a year, promote it in town by putting something in the newspaper, putting notices at store, post office and things like that, so the people could avail themselves of this if they wished. It would entail somebody probably calling Linda and saying, I want to sign up for this, and then having a roster kept of people who wanted to be visited by one of these vehicle pickups. And we hope that you would look favorably upon this recommendation.
Would I have a comment? I know we have done something similar in the past, Sid, and I think it's a good idea.
Anybody in town does this.
Excuse me?
Anybody in town does this. If anybody in town...
Does pick up?
Yeah, pick up.
Yeah, well, that's a, I know we did it before, and I was going to name, there's a, I think there's three names that were posted out on the bulletin board where you come in, and I don't know if they're still there or not, the people that they can contact to pick up. If not, we do have some people that, if they're interested in town, that'll do this. They should give us the name, too, and then when they call Linda up or whoever they call up asking, we can provide it with any assortment of names, and then they can choose. I think that's a reasonable thing for the board to back and let them do, you know. It doesn't sound like there's any resources in the town other than us trying to manage people and who contacts who and how, because what Linda would do is provide them a name and a number, and say, contact this person.
And I think it would help if the town had a supply of forms of bill of sale that a homeowner could just fill out.
Yeah, I think...
And I picked one off the internet and can leave it with Linda.
Okay. Yeah, and there's, usually when it's abandoned like that, the constable has had to gone and verify that it's abandoned. There's a form they fill out if they don't have a title for, because I remember having somebody had to come and do that. The const, a while back when it was Harold Marshall, that's how long ago I did that with an old car I had in the yard, so the person could take it away. There might be some coordination that has to occur with this, and again, what we might do is provide people with the number. I don't have any trouble with the fact that you've got a stack of bill of sales type forms here that they can come pick up. We can put that in a slot where they can pick it up. The real thing is informing them of the correct people to contact for, to make sure that nobody gets arrested, basically is what we want.
There's quite a few junkies around, though, so it's not, it's not hard. All you've got to do is, if you want to get rid of something, all you've got to do is let people know.
That's my point.
There's people out there that are, that'll come after that, and they're trying to make a buck, too. They may take them to Albany or Apken's or whatever, or Dovered up on a trail, but they're in-betweens, and they'll clean them up and take them out.
Yeah, and if we have a list of names like that, that's perfect, I think.
The only thing I...
Because some people don't know who to contact. I think that's what you're here for.
That's right.
Yeah, I only knew these two people in Massachusetts. I didn't know there was anybody in Vermont, but I'm happy to have them on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's quite a few, actually. There was three that I used to hand out all the time when I went and visited people with cars. There's three names, and I have them up there. I don't know if they're still doing it, but I have them, so...
Who do you want to have handle, then? The paperwork? The one picking it up or the person that's getting rid of it? Question for it.
Person who is getting rid of it has to sign it, has to sign the bill of sale.
Okay, if they are coming from Pono, or from our list, is that what we're saying?
That, what we're saying...
You follow what I'm trying to say, right? Right now, they go, they pick up the cars, and that's on them. Am I correct or not?
That's right.
Well, we, here again, we...
I don't want to get too deep, we don't have to.
We're not...
I'm not in the business of getting rid of cars.
We, the town, are not going to be the person that's giving anybody a car. Let's make that clear.
That's right. There you go.
We're not giving, we're not giving anybody, anybody's car. The bottom of what we're going to do is, we're going to give people information if they wish to get rid of their car, who to talk to.
Okay.
Very simple. That's all we... That's, that's all we're gonna do.
Yeah, okay.
And we're gonna have this list that says...
Okay.
If you really want to get rid of a car, here's the person to contact, because I, I tend to agree with you. And, and I'll try to sell the, the webpage. If we had a webpage, it'd be the ideal thing to put up on it and say, "Here's the people to contact," and you could put the form on it and say, "Print this form." We're, we're not there yet, but that's the sort of thing that a good webpage will do for us in moving this along without having to have people call someone and contact someone and then provide a list. But again, I think the way we can do it that might simplify some things is simply put it in our slot out there where we have different slots, the form and a list of names, and if somebody comes here, Linda can say, "Here," or whoever's here can say, "Here's your form, here's your contacts."
Yeah.
And that's our business.
That sounds like a plan.
Yep.
Is that okay?
That's fine, that's fine. That's why I brought it up, I just don't want us to get in the car business.
No, we're not, we're not going out to get somebody's car and give it away.
Okay.
You know, not that I haven't had a few a couple times, I wish somebody did give away, so I'd go after them, but...
Okay.
So, the board as a whole, I, I think we're into putting a form in and having something here.
Good.
So if, uh, you could leave the, the names and the form, we'll go from there.
I will do that. And Linda will get the names of the locals from you and we'll add them to the list.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay. Mike Bratcher. Batch, I keep calling you Bratcher.
Batch.
I put an R on your name, you know, but it's Batch.
Sure, why? So I'm Michael Batch with the Bennington County Regional Commission. I know you Nelson, but I'm not sure I know everybody else.
Okay. Henry Strohmeyer.
Hi, Henry.
I think you know me already.
I know you.
I think he does.
Is Ronnie gonna give you a few choice comments or...
He's always very supportive.
That's right.
So, um, do you have a copy of a memorandum? I, because I brought copies of people's...
Each of us has this in our orders.
So, as, the University of Vermont had done a study, they completed, um, last year that looked at mobile home parks throughout the state, and as you probably know better than anyone, panel has several mobile home parks and over a hundred of the mobile homes within those parks are within the flood hazard zone. So, panel has an interesting distinction, that Bennington is number one in the state in terms of the number of structures in the flood zone and you all are number 10, so you have a lot of...
It's interesting, a southern part of the state.
Yeah, you have a lot of people that are vulnerable to, to flooding now. I know these, as I understand, these parks were not affected by Irene, but they certainly are, there is a potential for, for flooding, you know, in the future. And it's a, it's a huge problem, I mean, it's a complicated problem because, um, the ownership of the park and, and the rent, and, and maybe some people own their lots or some people, um, may rent their lots. What we're interested in doing, there, there is, as there's a lot of money floating around post Irene, and there's funding for, uh, doing, doing planning studies, and what we thought would be a, a priority would be to do a, a study that would look at these parks, try to assess how they're vulnerable and more specifically than UVM did, and then look, try to identify options that would work for the people to help if we could alleviate those problems. It might be flood proofing of structures, it might be increasing the height of structures, might be possibly relocation, might be possible new, new kinds of building, I mean, it would have to be willing, you know, people willing to participate in these things. The maximum grant fund is $35,000 and you would be the applicant, we'd be glad, we would help you develop the application. The other key about this is in order to go through the process, you as a select board have to hold a public hearing as part of the application process, um, to make sure that people are involved appropriately. We would probably, if we, and again, hopefully you hire BRC to do it, but if, if not, you, this, this also could be funding that's, that's used in concert with your, you're probably gonna be applying for a municipal planning grant to update your town plan, so it could, could add to that. One of the things that you need to be thinking about in terms, in general, in terms of, um, that plan is that you will need to have a flood resiliency section in that plan, that's a new requirement. And that's basically looking at some of the stuff we've just talked about, how would you address, uh, potential flooding and, and flood damage. And the other thing that Linda and Casey and I have been working on is a, is a hazard mitigation plan, so it's tied into some of the other planning projects we're, we're already working on, um, which hopefully will benefit the town.
I know our bylaw has a flood section in it now because we were required to do that to get flood insurance.
Yep.
Which talked about elevation and a bunch of things for replacement of buildings and different things people had to do, uh, and that was simply to make sure the town was still eligible for their flood insurance, the people that were in.
Exactly.
Uh, how is this different than that? What's the...
Well, there wouldn't be a bylaw, there would basically be a plan focusing on the mobile home parks.
Okay, so it'd be a single document that would be directed at that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I should, I, you know, we're, it's a complicated process, so we're, we're developing a plan to solve a problem, to, it's, it's hard for me to, I don't want to say this is the way it's gonna end up with, I don't imagine bylaws necessarily coming out of it, um, they could. I mean, what I'm thinking is we'd try to develop strategies that can more work for the people in those parks.
Yeah, well, because the bylaws actually covers the homes that are within this flood plan as well. It's not just the, the parks, and I know this was stressing, looks strictly like it's after the parks and the trailers.
Well, let's say, let's say, I'm just gonna make this up, let's say that, um, there were 20 mobile homes in a given area and a, a good feasible option would be to raise them up a foot, okay? Where would, what I would hope we would do is work through the process of, well, is that feasible? And B, how would we fund that or, because in many cases owners can't afford that kind of thing, are there other sources of funding, uh, that they might be able to use? For instance, there are, there are hazard mitigation grants that can be used for those kinds of things. Those, those are funds that are, um, provided by the, by FEMA, they have to be matched at the local level, they actually come to the town and the town is the one that actually oversee doing that elevation, so elevation increase, is that something you want to get involved in? So, those are the, that's just one possibility, there, there, sure there are many other possibilities. Um, are there, are there other ways to, if...
I'm picking your brain here as we talk, but one of the things that we have in the bylaws is that people now in those areas have to have in a cement slab and they have to be tied down to the slabs so they won't float.
Yep.
Now, through this process and you talk about additional, after you do your studies and what your recommendations are, there might be grants for parks that are eligible to do certain things. Now, they don't do this unless they're removing a trailer today. If, if that was to say, "Hey, we want to raise them a foot, then we want to make sure they're secure."
Mm-hmm.
When you apply, is that what you apply for in, through the grant process? Is that the sort of, and I'm just speculating here because that might not be what we do, so these parks would then actually, the ones that were in the fringe versus the actual floodway, could actually be secured and done so they, through the process, and then you might say, "In the floodway, sorry, you're gonna float away," but there, there's just...
Yeah, I think so, or we might, we might figure out a way that, well, if you're in the floodway, maybe you need to be relocated.
Yeah.
Maybe that, maybe there is no feasible solution other than relocation. That doesn't mean the people are got to pick up and move because we don't have that authority or that power, but it gives them a pretty clear, you know, recommendation.
This is a planning grant to, to study the situation.
Yeah.
And make recommendations and...
Okay, then you would have...
Planning commission voted in favor of urging your support of this.
Yeah, it's hard for me to tell you exactly where it's gonna go because as, as you know, this isn't, this isn't a simple situation, it's been around for a long time, I mean...
No, and I, and I agree with, I think it's a good idea to do the study and come up with some solutions. You know, one of the solutions that was recommended long ago with many, the boards was that the culverts going under the tracks weren't sufficient for what the flow, water rate flows are today.
Okay.
That's not a proven fact.
You know...
That's not a proven fact. That was, that happened, uh, 30 years ago.
And the bottom line is, is, you know, that means somehow we gotta work with the rear...
Right.
But, but again, let's, I'm just past history in my mind of what some of the areas and what some of the concerns are.
Yeah, yeah.
And that didn't just affect trailers, that affected homes. So, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this, I, it says here, "We don't have to put any funds towards you at this point," I'm...
Now, what I think we could do...
There is, there is any requirement for matching funds.
If the grant, I know, no, basically, what happens is there's no funds to apply for the grants because the way the grant will work, but if the grant says, "These are the solutions," then from what I heard was, if we go forward for grants for solutions, then there is matching fund from the town, but that's to solve the problem afterwards. All we do now is just find out what the problems and what the solutions might be.
And, and these, you know, in many cases, if you're looking for grant funding, unless you have a plan, no one's gonna give you any money because they're gonna say, "Well, what do you..."
Yeah, they want to know what you're doing.
Sometimes one leads to the other.
The only question I really got on this is, uh, where does, where does, uh, park owners come in to this?
We would have to work with them.
That's, that was my point.
Yeah, we're not gonna leave anybody out.
Well, well, what I meant was, is, uh, where, where does that put, uh, do we need that approval before we move or you follow where I'm going with this?
Well, we have to, we have to have a public hearing.
Right.
Before they can apply.
I understand that, I heard that.
And my, and my feeling is this, that if we're gonna have a public hearing such as this, we should be looking for a place near these parks to hold our public hearings so if people from those parks wishes to come, they can come and talk about what we're doing here. And then we can give them the answers on how we're trying to solve some problems or, and they might not like that and they might love it, but the bottom line is, is, you know, a lot of those people down there don't have cars. I think if we have our meetings within walking distance...
Three of them is right next to the fire, fire department down the firehouse down there, am I correct?
Yeah.
You know, three of them are anyway, so...
That'd be great.
Right, that'd be great.
You know, and I think that's the sort, I think that's the sort of thing, when you say, "How do we get these people involved?" I think we need to promote that.
Well, my main thing is, is I just want to, I, I want, um, I want the owners to be...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can notify them by mail.
You know, kind of be a, a, help be the driver of something here, okay, does that make sense? Um, okay.
Yeah, we can notify the owners by mail, but I think the park, the people that live in the park...
Oh, there's no question.
Needs to be notified.
Right.
Because most of the owners don't live in town except for one.
What we'd like to try to do is, there's, there's a, there's an August 6th deadline for getting an application, if we kind of work our way backwards, if we could try to schedule something in early July or somewhere, I, I'm, when are your, I, do you have meet twi- twice a month, is that what?
No, we meet more than often than that, we meet about four times a month, the, the question...
Okay, so there's plenty, there's plenty of options to hold a public...
Yeah, the question I would say is, what's the, what's this...
We can have that whenever.
What's the, what's the statute on how we have to post it before we...
It's a 15 day notice, it's a public hearing, so it's the same...
Okay, so, so, so some point we have to post it, but we have to be 15 days before we actually have the hearing, okay? So, between now and next week or whenever, we need to decide, uh, because 15 days will go by fast once we're into June and we won't need to be in July.
Can I, can I go back to my working backwards? Because when we were looking at the requirements, it, it, we have to actually have an application ultimately to the state. And according to the requirements for the grant, the application has to be available for anyone to look at too, so what I was gonna suggest is that we work on an, an application, come back to you as soon as we can so that you can see it, and then that can go out with a public notice and be available for anyone to look at. And that will basically say, "This is what we're gonna do and, um, how much it's gonna cost and, and all the rest."
Sounds good to me.
I make a motion to support it.
Yeah.
I got a motion to support it, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I got one question I'd like to ask.
Just go ahead.
Are the park owners gonna have any skin in the game on this? They're the ones that are, they're making a profit here.
Yeah, yeah.
See, you're, you're talking to the conservative guy again. They're the ones that are making a profit, people are paying them rent, they are making a profit.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and anyway, everybody's responsible for their own being, I come from the old school. You know what I mean? When my house floods, I'll do something about it.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not gonna go to the state of Vermont or...
Yeah.
Town of Bennington or BRC, I'm gonna try to do something. And I, and I'm wondering if these, uh, park owners, I mean, it's fine to try to help somebody a little less fortunate or whatever, and you know if somebody's in a real problem, but wouldn't we be smarter probably to, uh, if this is a, gonna be a money pit, wouldn't we be smarter as they left not to let them come back in?
You mean as people...
As far as the state or the town?
You mean the mobile home?
If a mobile home became empty and destroyed or whatever, why put another one in there if we gotta be responsible for doing something for it and the, and the park owner doesn't?
If that's...
I mean, does anybody follow me? I may be way, I maybe I'm way behind.
I'm totally following you, another, but it's basically like if, if, if it's a non-conforming use and you abandoned it, you can't go back and put the non-conforming use in, right? In other words, if you have a gas station where you're not supposed to have it, and the gas station goes out of business, then you can't have a gas station again, it's the same kind of idea. I don't know whether that's feasible.
I don't, I don't think that does apply with mobile home parks because they have a special status in the Mass, uh, Vermont statutes, but what the planning, what the present bylaw requires is that if a mobile home becomes vacant and, or is moved out and a new one is to be moved into its site, the new one has to comply with the new law and it's at the mobile home park owner's expense, certainly not the town's expense.
Absolutely.
That has to be raised up, has to be shackled to the foundation and slab, and the more recent ones, we've been raising up three feet, so it's, it's not an insignificant increase in height.
Yeah, let me, I'm gonna try to answer Ronnie's question, you correct me if I'm wrong. What we're applying for now is a grant and a study, which costs nobody nothing, we're doing nothing to fix anybody's home. But when the time comes, once the, the decisions have been made of what are possible fixes and solutions and money is needed to do those type of repairs, that's when I think the homeowners need to step up.
Sure, I would agree with that.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it shouldn't be the town that's paying for it.
And the park owners.
That becomes the homeowners and the park owners.
Like I said, if, if, if we have a disaster of some sort, I don't care if a guy lives on a hill or he lives down by the river. If you have a disaster and a person's out at their house, I could see the town helping them a little, some way or another. We have done that before. We dug out brickways and things like that. And, uh, I could understand that. But as far as just waiting for something to happen and having, I mean, I hate this big brother thing of the state. Always mandating with no money. It's almost like schools, you know? They mandate, but there's no money.
Yeah, but we're not trying to do that here. I think sometimes there are situations like this where it's not just one big disaster. It's like little incremental things and this person gets damaged and, and it's sort of, it, it's not as black and white. But I agree with you. I think, I think the owners and, and of the, of the parks and, and of the mobile homes should definitely participate. It shouldn't be just a big freebie. I agree.
Okay, that's all for me.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just throw one other thing out?
When you write your grant, you'll come back and you'll discuss what the grant is.
I sure will. We'll be, I'll get, I'll work with Lynn and get back on your agenda.
And then we'll, and then we'll go from there on, uh, scheduling when that public hearing will be. Do you have something else besides this?
Make sure you all know that, I think we've talked before about hazard mitigation grants. Casey, there, there is another round going. If there's something that you guys wanna look for, there's another grant round. And one of the things that came up last time was, um, generator grants. Several towns applied for generators for their, um, um, shelters and things like that. So I just wanna make sure you guys know that there's another option out there. We, we can help.
What other things are available besides generators?
Well, I mean, hazard mitigation can be used for many things. They could be used, for instance, let's say a house is flooded fifteen times. You could, you could buy it. You could buy it out and make the owner whole. You could do the kind of elevation increases we've talked about. If there are culverts or bridges that need, that have been damaged multiple times.
How about roads, roads that are?
Yeah, they can, they can be used for roads. I, I think the basic thing, the big complicated thing is you've gotta prove that it's more costly to keep fixing something than it is to get this grant and fix it once, right, the first, first time. That's, that's always the big advantage.
We have a road that is more costly to fix because where it's washed out than it would be if we did something different. So, yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, the other reason I'm also pointing.
The documentation. We went through this.
But the other thing.
Here's some documentation.
The other thing that, that, um, Vermont Emergency Management has, has done in at least past couple of months is that this is a rather complicated requirement of FEMA that's kind of beyond us to figure out how to do too. But they have, they've brought in ex- extra help from consultants who will help you do that. So when we were recently going through a round of generator grants, there were people in which, I'll give you a example. Manchester was applying for a grant. They sent all the documentation up to these people who crunched the numbers and said, yes, it will work or no, it won't work. And that's a big advantage than having you try to do it yourself or, or me try to do it.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure the opportunities, you know, the opportunities there.
Just very briefly, while we're on the subject, I just wanted to mention that I had a conversation, um, not officially, recently with Larry Crist, who's the director of the American Red Cross for the state of Vermont.
Oh, yeah.
And they have a related project going. It's that they're going to all the communities in Vermont and they're probably gonna wanna talk to you at some point. It's just a heads up about making sure that you have, um, good strategies that fit the town on the emergency shelters. And as you know, when we've had to do that, it's often difficult for the fire departments or the school and others. And they have some strategies that they've worked out with other schools. Sometimes it involves churches or identifying various places. And, uh, this is part of this overall resiliency effort to protect citizens and the Red Cross is taking the lead and you may be hearing from them. I think that's all.
Thanks.
I wanted to mention.
I really appreciate you having me.
Appreciate you coming down.
Sure.
Very informative.
See you next time.
Nice seeing you, Mike.
Yeah.
Night, gentlemen.
Us conservatives have to stay together.
Good night, Mike. Good night, Sid.
Night, Lynn.
Good night.
Hey. Uh, let's get our road foreman up here and do our town truck purchase and culverts and material stuff.
Correct me if I'm wrong, when you apply for a grant and get it, it costs somebody something, doesn't it, Ronnie?
Absolutely.
Guaranteed. Guaranteed. Just like our blacktop grants, it costs somebody something.
Costs somebody something.
But we like it when they give them to us.
Culvert purchase, I guess, is the first one on there.
Okay.
I think I used, oh, well, we, we purchased, I think it was, uh, seven thousand dollars of culverts last year. And, uh, looking to do, uh, probably at least the, I'd get, I think, eight lengths of two footers. We've been putting a lot more of those in. Seems how we've been getting all these big rainstorms in certain areas, uh, wore a bigger culvert anyway. So that's, uh, uh, I think there's, uh, there's almost ten grand in that line.
I was wondering, what did they put on the line? Culvert bridges and materials, got eight. They had ten for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. They got eight for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. So starting this July, did you spend any of it yet, this?
Uh, I did buy, uh, a roll of construction fabric, but it may not have come out of that line. They had been, uh, construction materials.
Because it talks about culvert bridges and materials.
Yeah, I don't have an expenditure report in front of me or I could tell you exactly what, uh, I'm pretty sure that there's, I know there's, there's more than seven thousand in the line.
Left there?
Oh, yes.
That you haven't spent? Cause you said you spent last year. How much did you spend? Or was it the year before?
So the last year's fiscal budget, not this year's.
Well, last year goes into July first.
Year before, well, I think we purchased them this time last year, actually.
So, so that would have been in this, this year's until July first. So whatever you spent, you spent out of that ten thousand. So what we have now this year is eight thousand coming July first. So if you spent seven, you still have three. I just don't know what you spent. We, we probably need a.
I should have, I should have brought my expenditure report. I don't have.
Really, at this time of the year, could you ask the treasurer to give us a report on, uh, just print one out where we are? So we can look at our budget, see if we are overspending some lines or not, because we've got a month to go here. And if we need to, we can slow things down next month if we need to. Okay, thanks. Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, the last time we purchased culverts wasn't out of this fiscal budget. It was out of the fiscal budget prior to. And that eight thousand you're seeing is for the next fiscal year, not this fiscal year. So there's, there's, uh, there's ten thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, in the culvert material line.
Well, the year before, it says you spent six thousand. Okay, six thousand one hundred and eight dollars. You want me to be exact?
Yeah, that was.
Okay, and that was twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. Now, twenty thirteen, July first of last year till now, this doesn't show any expenditures, cause I don't have it in front of me, but you have ten thousand dollars. And so you're saying since last July to now, you have not spent any money on culverts?
And on culverts.
Okay. So that would say that you have ten thousand remaining, which we'll find out when we get the report. Go ahead.
I'm looking to purchase about, uh, seven thousand dollars with the culverts.
Who are, who's, who, who are you dealing with right now and buying?
Uh, uh, call it, um, Ferguson. They're all the tri-state bid. I'm not sure if it's the same exact numbers as it was last year, but it's.
So we're, we're, we're getting other, other S quotes too from other suppliers?
No, but I, I can. I mean, uh, they were, every one that was selling culverts around here were selling them at the same, uh, I guess they call it municipal bid. An eighteen inch culvert was, uh, ten dollars and one cent a foot. That's what everybody was paying for.
You're buying twenty four, what size are you?
Twenty fours and eighteens.
Twenty fours and eighteens.
Buy what length?
Twenty foot.
Twenty.
Okay, the only question I got on this, uh, culverts. I'm not gonna talk about the money. I wanna talk about where and how many.
As many as I can put and everywhere needed.
Well, uh, you, I understand that. That, that's one way to do it. But I guess what I'm saying is, is to lay the money out. Uh, I think it would be nice.
If we know where it's going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You just come on in here and say, okay, I'm gonna put, uh, five on, uh, Sinister Street. I'm gonna put two on Burrington. I'm gonna, I mean, really, you need to know.
Burlington Road.
I don't care where you put them. That's why I'm saying, I don't wanna talk about, right now, I don't wanna talk about the money. I wanna talk about, uh, uh, what's, uh, you, have, have, have an order. Put, give us an order. I, I mean, does that make sense to me?
Give you a plan of where you're gonna put them.
That, where, and, and, and an order, you know? I'm not gonna tell you how many to buy. That's, that's not what I, I wanna get into. That's your job. You know, if you follow what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, and if you think you should have a couple on hand in case of emergency because of the flooding, then tell us that.
But they'll tell us where and how many.
Then tell us who wants a couple on hand.
That's right. That's fine.
Because I, I think we had some before. We used to have some on hand, but I don't know where you.
Yeah, and I've got, I've got some now, but I mean, uh.
And that's fine.
Every time you go, I can put in four lengths a day pretty easily and a, and a, and a road that we close off. Uh, so they go, they go, they can go pretty fast if you, if you.
Well, I know Benedict Road, I talked to you about the one that's over there that's metal.
There's actually a one past that gentleman's house where you get under that dip and there's a stump on the other side of the road. There needs to be one across there also.
Yeah, there's two right out there. Yeah, I, uh, well, actually, I got, I guess, I'll talk a little bit about that. I know every mud season, we have these large stretches of road that seems to be the same ones blowing out every time. I don't know if we, there's a way that we can solve that. So each year, we have less of those. You know, but I happened to take that drive out there and see what that was over on Benedict. Uh, and I know you went over and you guys put stone and you cleaned it up and it's, it's good. Uh, but how do we prevent, is there a way that we can prevent those sections of roads? You know, there's like a piece on Lad Road that does the same thing. There's a couple elsewhere that'll blow out. I think there's one out past Winder there each year. If it's real wet, you get a lot of mud in it. Uh, is there a way that you can dig those up, rebuild those roads so they don't do that or?
Well, yeah, there is. And we've done, uh, sections like, uh, and Skipperie Road. I mean, we laid out, uh, four hundred and thirty feet of construction fabric and laced it with stone and then, uh, gravel all the top of it, but it's, it's time consuming.
Maybe, maybe we should do one or two of those a year though, because then eventually we, you know, have less of these people minking their mufflers off and calling the sulkman at night.
Well, in the area that, that, uh, before you get to Benedict Road around the corner, that is a, uh, very wet area. And there's really not a whole lot you can do. It's ochre. And once that stuff gets saturated, we've been putting stone in there for years and years, ever since I've been working for the town. It's getting better every year. I ditched both sides of the road, but if you go up the hill, you got Noble Road that comes down. And I put water bars in there, but it's just like county road. The water lays right in the road and it comes from a long distance. And it's nothing but swamp above there. So it carried, the water carries down through, saturates the road bed in both sides of the shoulders. And you could put ditches.
Culverts.
Five feet deep and twenty feet away from the road and it would still be saturated when the ground freezes and thuds. There's nothing you can do. And above that, it's all, you got one culvert that drains on the opposite side of the road, on the inside of the road, which just saturates the other side of the road. So it's, it's, you know, ten to one dozen the other. And, and like I say, we've been putting stone in there and it gets better every year. I think it gets better, what would actually stiffen it up. You know, we've been putting round stone in it for at least fifteen years that I've been here. If we started using a fractured stone, you know, three, four, or five inch minus stone, that would stiffen it up. Instead of digging it all out, cause you've gotta realize there's cobbles in there and they're probably that deep. So you'd be digging for a while.
Let me ask you a question on, on the culverts. How, how is that, is there, do you have a list of culverts that need to be replaced right now?
I, I do have, like I say, we're gonna be working on Burlington Road a good portion of this summer.
Right, but I'm just saying overall, I mean, how, how do you, you set it up under roots? I mean, do we have?
Uh.
How do you look at it? You have a quadrant?
Culvert city will hit with the grader. There are two, that are two shell. Uh, culverts that aren't long enough, uh, culverts that are rotted. Uh, if they're working to a certain point, uh, like I say, either or, if you hit them with a grader, you got either to replace it and put it in deeper. And, uh, there's, you know, there's quite a few in around town. There's like, there's like six hundred plus culverts in town.
Right, no, but I'm just saying, do you have like a pending list of which ones we're looking at doing this year?
The more critical ones, right?
Uh.
How is that, how is that, you know, categorized?
There's a, there's probably another twelve on Burlington Road that need to be replaced. So there's two lengths per, depending if, may have to, a couple of those, another half a culvert to get it long enough and further if we have to route. Um, we put in three or four two footers on Hidden Valley Road last year and a couple on, uh, Lad. Um, I put three on Upper Skipperie last spring. Um.
Were these planned?
Put them in all over.
But were these planned or were they putting out fires? In other words, you had a problem and you had to fix it?
There's an issue, well, not so much putting out a fire, but if there's a, a road drainage issue and the culvert's not deep enough or it's not long enough, there's not enough shoulder, then it gets, it gets, if tobacco's close by, we replace it. And, uh, Upper Skipperie last year was, it was a mess up there. I mean, the road was saturated. There's no ditching. Or not, the ditching was all caved in because it's all clay up there. So the clay falls in the ditch and plugs the ditch up.
I'm gonna try to move on as fast as I can, as I said. Here's, here's what I see. I see that you, you have areas of the road that you're working on and you need to culvert stockpile so you can fix those problems when you find them. Then the other thing is you've got a planned road you wanna work on like Burlington, where you actually got a certain number of culverts that you need. And you're gonna have them on hand because when you work there, you're gonna do this. Uh, what we need to know, I think, is what you estimate you need on hand to meet your needs when you're working out there. And then what are the planned ones you're planning to put in this year? Give us, you know, so we know when we're buying culverts, if you need five on hand for one thing, and if you got six or twelve you're putting in somewhere, we're doing that. And, and I, and that says to us that your work project for this year is, is you're gonna go out somewhere and you're gonna do this road and place the culverts. But while you're maintaining these other roads, you expect to pop a couple in here and there or. Yeah, that, that gives us something to work.
Been the plan right along, but, uh.
And if we don't have enough culverts to, to keep for what you need, we, we need to know that also.
Well, I try to keep, uh, culverts are one thing that you, you know, drainage, 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 the most important thing on maintaining town highways. So, uh, that's the, uh, when we come across one that needs to be replaced, it doesn't, you just know, if that goes there, we just do it.
Let me, let me ask this a different way so we can move this on. How many culverts do you normally have on hand per year?
Uh, it's, we've been using a lot more eighteen inch culverts, but I've been, the last couple of years, we've been using more twenty-four inch culverts.
How many culverts you've had on hand?
Uh, uh, twenty lengths each.
Do you have fifteen culverts of ea- uh, of each?
I've got, I got, I think there's eight two footers left and probably twelve eighteen.
So, so you got twelve eighteen inch culverts on hand?
Yeah, that's six culverts crossing, crossing a twenty foot townhouse. Anything wider than that or deeper than that, it's gotta be another half, half culvert.
Yeah, but again, I'm trying to figure out how many you actually need.
Casey, answer the question.
I, I, I.
Yeah, tell me how much you need.
I don't have a list of exactly where I'm gonna put culverts.
That's where I'm going. That's why I asked the question.
If you want me to go around and drive around and, and pop out which ones need to be replaced, well, that's a whole different ball of wax. Cause there's, there's, that's, that's a judgment call. I mean, I'll replace a culvert if it's interfering with the drainage. And that's, you know, that's the way I do it. Okay, I, I don't know how to explain it to you. I don't, I don't understand what you're looking for.
And I think you're fine. What you're telling me is when you find a problem with the road, you're taking care of it and fixing it. That's what we pay you for. What we also were looking for is how many culverts do you need on hand for the projects that you wanna get done this year? That you're, you've got on your list to do. That's, that's what we're looking, looking for over here. And at the other side of it, you gotta have X amount of culverts. And, and you should say, if you want thirty culverts, you want thirty culverts. If you, what did you buy last time?
Six thousand dollars worth.
How many culverts?
Ten dollars a foot. I bought, uh, I think it was, uh.
Sixty?
No, 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 it was probably forty.
Oh, yes, he bought forty culverts. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, but I, I guess that, uh.
And he's got fifteen of them left.
Well, I had, I still had culverts in the yard when I bought them.
That's okay, that's fine. Uh, I guess really what I'm really after is, is, um, if we're gonna go out on the different highway names out there and we need to do some work, uh, what it really does is it tells the public that's footing the bill that yes, everyone is getting something out of this road budget. And at the same time, when we want to have, or I, me, just me talking, my, my opinion. I wanna have you with a pile of material over there or culverts so that you can do the job. But of course, in order for me to just, okay, let's do it, I'd like to know where we're gonna do it. Does that make any sense? Okay, so that's.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
Okay, so that's all I'm asking for. It's very simple.
So you can ta- you can table that right there until I can get yourself an approximate list. How many I can, you know?
And where, and where? Is it fair enough? Okay.
There'll be other, other things that, since we didn't get a, a grant for a box culvert, is, is that something you wanna, uh, back into this year? You wanna wait to get a grant?
I wanna know how critical that box culvert is to be replaced. Is it falling in or not falling in?
You have, you have one that's a, I think it's a six foot round tube that was replaced maybe thirty years ago. You know, Henry, is it?
Where is it?
Uh, Monty Anthony Road.
Okay.
First one, first big one.
Yep, yep, yep.
Eventually, occasionally, water, you know, you get more water than what the.
Well, Monty Anthony Road is a tough road.
Across the road, crosses the road. Same with the one up above there. And that's even smaller diameter. Cause that's old boiler shell and flat rocks laid out on the inlet end. It's all ledge in there.
Three foot? Is that a three foot culvert?
It was bigger than that.
There is.
It might even be a, it might even be a five.
Boiler shell, it's like five foot or whatever.
Them are a couple of big, big, I don't know how big.
Well, there's a couple of sections, boiler shell, then there's a piece of, uh, corrugated tube on the inlet. Then there's a flat rock on the outlet.
Now, if we're talking about culverts and I, I, um, why don't you come in and say, all right, there's, uh, two of them that I think we need to address? Now, I'm not trying to tell you that we need to address them this summer, cause there's only so much you can do. But we can make the board here could probably help put together a plan so that when we come budget time, that maybe for the following year from now, you will kinda have in mind that that might be the project that's gonna be top priority. Make any sense?
Yes.
Okay, so just come in and tell us kinda what, what's, what's happening out there.
And to bring you up to speed, the boards have been doing this in the past and he has a hundred and eighty-eight thousand in that box culvert fund right now because of that planning.
Cause of that same culvert too.
So the question I keep asking, is it critical we replace it this year or do we wait for grant money and make that hundred and eighty-eight thousand stretch further?
I have a question. Does it have to be done as a box or can we put a big tube by a replacement?
Can't put another tube in there.
Why not?
It's ledge. It's all ledge in there. And I don't think you can get a squash tube big enough to.
Okay.
Hydrologically, they're saying eighty-six square feet of waterway, which is bigger than the box that crosses North Powder Road.
Yeah, and there's some states.
My second question is, do we know how much it would cost to put in a box culvert there?
Uh, yeah, just the box itself is about forty-two thousand dollars. And that's depending on, uh, there's two, I haven't had a chance to get the stream alteration engineer over, cause he's been real busy this time of year.
Okay.
And, uh, you can either do one of two things. You could make a, uh, bottomless box, which means footings on both sides.
Yep.
And then a U-shaped type box, uh, structure. But with the ledge being there, he may, uh, not be too keen on that. The other thing is, is there's a tube there now and we may be able to alter the stream by moving the box right next to the tube that's there. And that may get us away from a good. tube that's there. And that may get us away from the good majority of the ledges there. I don't know, I've never dug in there. I have no idea.
Could, could you get an idea what it would cost if, if it's forty thousand for a new box?
Just for the materials, yeah.
Okay, could you get us an idea what it's gonna cost to have it installed?
Yeah, I could give you a figure right now if you want, basically.
Please.
We've done three or four of them.
Yeah, but probably about forty something thousand.
Another forty.
Last one was thirty-six thousand. Moved a lot of material, but that was in oh nine. So you're talking pretty close to forty thousand. So about, anywhere from eighty to eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollars.
You said a hundred, you're well within.
This one's a little bit longer because of the skew that's in the road. And you'll need wing walls poured in place. Uh, we don't, I don't think we have the same guys that.
Yeah, about a hundred, I'd estimate a hundred and hope for us.
And could we get another year out of it? What's there now?
As long as we don't get into really major rains. I mean, if it goes over the road again like it has been, uh, it'll just wash the shoulder off. That's the third time I fixed that one section there. I mean, it's not, uh.
And this, this is the sort of stuff that you were listening to earlier about abatement?
Right.
This is the sort of thing that you can apply for grants and they'll give you money to help you put those things in. But you, you need to well document and, and, and go where it is, cause he's replaced this.
And you need, also need a plan. You have to have it planned out and, you know, this, we put in.
Well, I guess that's what I was talking about.
That's just what it is.
Are there any other critical large ones?
You know, let's put it together.
One below it's undersized, though.
Right. But I mean, anything else that needs attention?
Yeah, there's one on, uh, uh, Northwest Hill Road, just bottom of Chrome Road, that's in the ground like thirty feet. So that's nothing that, uh, that's gonna, that would be a major.
And that's in rough?
That's rough, yeah. We fixed both shoulders, that's boiler shell. And, uh, there's one on the crossroad, which is way undersized for that water shell.
There's like four of them out there that needs to be done. And that's the big ones.
Those are the big ones.
Crossroads fairly simple though. Could that be done, that has to be a box or that be a?
That would have to be a box also. They really shy away from anything with a tube, especially with a waterway that big. Uh, one is they don't want you disturbing the stream bed every thirty years or forty years to replace one. Whereas a box culvert is supposed to last a hundred years, supposed to. That's the words of the.
Am I, am I hearing right that, uh, the, the, those box, max culverts are, uh, forty thousand a piece?
No.
Your share, our share. What, what, what's the car?
Just the materials, uh.
Okay, what I'm trying to find out here is, is while you put this all together, why don't you, why don't we try to put together something that's gonna say, hey, um, you said we got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars? Well, I wanna know, uh, what are we gonna try to fix? That's all I'm trying to, I'm just trying to bring it to a head here.
The, the.
Cause all of a sudden, summer's gone.
The ideal thing is.
In the, in the ideal world.
The ideal world is, is that you would put together a plan for the next three to five years for box culverts, like, like we did years ago for the box culvert.
Or is that already done? Casey, that's my, where are we? I don't know.
Well.
That, those are the, those are the culverts that are on the list. On the, and, and we have been in the last fifteen years, uh, putting a box culvert in every time we've been able to get a grant. The first five years, we got structures grants and black topping grants almost every year.
I thought I was hearing two things. I thought that maybe, um, there already was a plan in place for which one was gonna get replaced.
Next. Well, well, the, the plan says that there's three more. It, it, when the plan started, there was, I don't know, eight or nine of these things.
We put seven in so far.
So basically what we're looking at is that we were looking at putting in so many, but what we, money was good then, you could get it. But what you really need now to, to help the shares, the things like they're doing with, uh, Irene and the rest, the abatement grants. But that means you've gotta have a detailed plan for how you're gonna do this culvert this year, maybe this one two years from now and the other one two years. So in six years, you got all three of them replaced. And you write it up and then you apply for a grant and then the following, you, you apply again, just like we've been doing. And, and you might be lucky enough to get it. And if you do, you replace it. If you don't, you leave it alone if it's something you can leave alone. Uh, we've been patching the shoulder on this one that he's talking about. It's one by Chanel, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And basically, what, two or three times since you've been here?
Been there, I've done, I've done that one twice and I've done the other one three times. One with the hydro ones.
Okay, yeah. So basically what you're looking at is, is, uh, the board coming up and helping Casey along with, uh, Casey telling us what they are. And somehow getting somebody to, to B C R C or whoever, because he did talk about helping us with these type of abatement grants, getting abatement grants put together for the other three or four and then moving forward. Unless we need to replace that this year. If we need to replace it this year, what I'm telling you is you had money. So it's your, that's where you're at.
And, and not to get out the subject of that, uh, we also did not get a, uh, class two resurfacing grant, which was, uh, the grant was, uh, allocated for North Powell Road. So we didn't get that grant. But, uh, we usually try to actually put out a mile of blacktop a year, try to, within a reason.
And last year you did not.
And we did, we did a little bit on Burrington Road, two, uh, hundred and thirty-five feet. Uh, and then we did a section on.
That's almost a mile.
Center Street.
Well, and the only reason why that was done is because FEMA told us we had to get that done and we wouldn't have got the money from them.
And then, and Center Street was torn right apart because of the sewer project.
Yeah, we had to do that.
They laid, they laid clay back in there and it was water right underneath the blacktop.
Wouldn't flow under the road, no, you put a culvert in there too, then you.
The two of them.
Two of them, yeah.
Well, the only reason I was trying to bring this to a head was is if we wanna try to apply for a grant, let's know that, uh, we're gonna apply for it and we're gonna know, kinda have an idea of which one of these culverts is top priority.
Sounds like that.
Okay, all right, and that's the one that go with it.
And that's the, uh, grant that we had actually filed.
No, since you had to bring up the subject of resurfacing, uh, how many miles are we gonna do this year?
But I wanna make sure, are we done with culverts at this point? Will we, for him to come up with a plan?
Yeah, we're doing culverts till I get Henry a list.
Now let's go to blacktop. I'm, I want to.
I wanna hear, I wanna hear a number for.
You already know, you already know what culverts are need.
Yes.
And, 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 and it's not gonna fall apart tomorrow, so.
Good, that's what I wanna hear.
Let me ask you one question. So, so in your mind, the priority right now is, is one Chanel's.
At least we know that.
Could, could we get some numbers together?
Oh yeah.
Some firm numbers together for next month's meeting on, on installation of a box culvert there.
Yeah.
It won't be, the, uh, beginning of July. Yeah, July.
I mean, we got some contractors around and give us some.
Oh yeah, I mean, that's, that's a.
I mean, we're not looking for bids, we're just looking for.
The problem, I can get your numbers on, I can get your numbers on the cost of the materials. The actual contractor's not gonna give you anywhere, well, maybe a ballpark figure, cause I haven't had a chance to have the extreme alteration. He's the one that decides where you can alter the stream, if you can alter the stream and what kind of structure you need to use.
Yeah, then when you put the head it.
Yeah, so I mean, if I, if I, if I, uh, get you a bid on a box culvert with a bottom in it with V baffles in it and he says, oh, you can't use that, uh.
But, but we'll have, but, but we will have a number.
But you can give a range. You can give us a range.
Well, I give you, the, the, on, on the box culvert itself, I'm, it's, it'll be, if, if it's a V bottom box, uh, eighty-six square feet of waterway, it's, it's thirty-eight to forty thousand dollars for the materials. That's just the box. No wing walls, no cutoff walls, nothing.
Okay.
All right, we took care of your money.
If you could get, if you could get us some numbers, some rough numbers.
I'm telling you.
Give us, give us some numbers.
Very good, good, good. Yeah, uh, what I was after was, is what, what is the cost for, um, um, I don't know how you do it now. Uh, do you, uh, first go on, uh, the blacktop, uh, a mile of road with a, with a, with a shim? Or, or do we, um, and what I mean is, is do we level it first?
Hang on, yes. You always, you always shit.
I don't even know how you do it anymore, okay?
You always have.
All right, uh, all right, okay, um, ask, just, uh, do we wanna get it from someone else? Or just say we're gonna put three hundred tons to the mile down? That was a number we used to use?
Yeah, and then decide.
Three, four hundred tons to the mile for shim it up, uh, uh, real, uh, uh, real tough, uh, uneven roads. So you'd kinda hope to shim it to that. What kind of money do we need if we wanna do a mile?
Well, I guess the question I would be asking is, there's, there's different type classes roads. There's class two and then there's, that, that, that we get money for.
Right.
Do we wanna do our class two roads now or do we wanna try and get grants for them? If, again, I'll ask the same question I asked about the culvert, if they'll hold up, if they're gonna fall apart and be so bad that we can't live with them, then, then I, we're probably gonna have to blacktop. Or is there roads out there that aren't class two that need to be blacktopped? And if we're gonna really put the bill fully, we have to anyways, anytime, those are the ones we should be looking at if they need it. Uh, so, again, I'm always looking at the money side of it, you know, I'm sure our taxpayers don't want us just, because the road nee- needs it and it, but it could last another year and maybe we get something. They'd rather have us wait, I hope anyways. Uh, but that's the sort of thing I'm trying to stress. So when Casey comes back and tells us what roads he thinks they should be on, he, he's looking at, hey, you know, I remember, what was it? We had to wait three or four years one time before we ever got any class two money from some of these people. It was a tough time.
Well, a- all I'm getting at is, I, I know that, um, you know, uh, sometime back, we, uh, it took quite a while before we brought roads up to specs or up to par. And what we done was is we shimmied them up. And we didn't let them just all go to pieces.
Yep.
So we really, for a number of years, at one point in this town, um, we repaired and, and what we done was is we shimmied them up, made them passable and level and, and at least you were making a plan to someday maybe shoot them. You, you know what I'm trying to say?
We shimmied them, we crack sealed, things that wasn't being done, a- and we did save a lot of road.
Okay.
Costs over time.
Kept them going. I mean, I, I don't want us to do nothing because I don't, I'm afraid you'll get way, really behind, don't you, or say something? I mean, I'm not debating this, I'm.
I think, I think our, I think our class two roads are in actually pretty decent shape. There is some that actually could use some shim on the actual shoulder.
Yeah.
Uh, but that is probably more cost effective to do it under a grant.
But hoping to get it.
So, so the class three roads that we should, we should be concentrating on blacktopping with, with town funds. And if you look through, uh, I'm gonna say only for the last fifteen years or sixteen years that I know of, uh, the majority have, have been gone over at least once, except for, uh, well, I'm gonna say not except for, they probably all have been hit in a spot except for the one in front of the, uh, rescue squad building that has never been touched since I've been here. Uh, Bee Hill actually was chip sealed and it was actually paved. I think that was in oh four, oh three or oh four, but that's the only one that's actually deteriorated enough so that it actually should be resurfaced.
Notice the shoulders on that was pretty.
Right.
Pretty bad.
The, um, the only other one, other than Burrington Road, after we get the ditching and stuff done, taking care of the culverts replaced, uh, is, uh, Oak Hill School Road. The manholes, the blacktop actually, the whole road's been dug up completely. It's got fabric underneath it over a thousand feet and it's got three inches of three-quarter mix. But that has all settled in now and the manholes are sticking up. We're starting to hit them with the plow. So that actually is another one that probably could use a, an overlay.
Okay, so, so I guess the question's the ones that you just talked about. Are they something that we could shim or are they something that we should be doing a full blacktop?
Bee Hill should, is, is a, should have an overlay, complete overlay. The shimmin' on the, uh.
How long's Bee Hill?
Uh, twenty-three hundred and fifty feet.
About a half mile, a little more.
Not a lot.
Little less. So, so we're talking a half a mile there, which, uh, what's, uh, what do you estimate we're talking about?
Uh, depending on what asphalt costs, but, uh, last year, last time we, last time we paid for, I think it was, uh, I think it was sixty dollars a ton.
How many ton for half mile?
Uh, probably seven, eight hundred.
Seven, eight hundred, say eight hundred and six?
What kind of layer?
That's two inches.
Two inches.
Uh, and you're saying sixty, what, I didn't.
And if it's uneven, it'll be more.
A ton?
Sixty dollars, he said.
Sixty? So what do you got in your head there, Ryan? Seventy, seven hundred ton, sixty dollars?
About forty thousand.
Forty-eight, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's okay. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with.
So you're reckon, you're, you think that'd be a good project this year?
The, uh, that's the one that needs it the worst.
It's got two hundred and six thousand in it. Yeah, something else, you know, I think we need to talk about it is, is Burrington Road.
Yeah.
A lot of the issues right now with Burrington Road, besides the culverts, could be done with some hot mac, hot mix patching. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tempor- yes, it's a temporary, but it's, it's gonna be, it could hold us for.
Well, he's gotta get his culverts in before.
Well, I'm, I'm saying besides that, in the places where the culverts, where you've dug the culverts out, shouldn't we take that gravel down a couple inches and pat, and patch that?
Well, we could, but, uh, as it stands right now, it's, it's easier just to smooth that off.
Okay.
I mean, it's just like grading dirt road.
I drove thirty over it today. I was just on it.
Yeah, this, I mean, you know, the only worst part about that is, is.
You just a few potholes.
It's the center.
That's what I'm saying, center part.
The center, where the, where the two concretes meet, that's the worst part of the whole thing.
I, I need one person talking at a time.
Saturates underneath it, has got the concrete all broke up. And those, and you, you can, uh, blacktop over that, but that's just a waste. Then, that needs, that needs to come up.
But what, I, I, I understand that, but I'm saying where some of the holes are in the center, to make it a little bit more comfort, you know, a little bit more passable. I mean, I, I've been over there a couple of times. I don't know if any guys have been over to look at it. We talked about it.
I drove in the end. I, I didn't go thirty miles an hour. My car probably rides a little.
I'm telling you, it wasn't too bad.
Well, yeah, we should, uh, we should all take a ride down there one of these nights before it gets dark and take, take a quick.
And I noticed there's a couple of the spots, South Stream Road, there's a couple of places it's breaking up.
Yeah.
Um, that could be, that could be corrected with a, with a hot mix patch.
Problem with hot mix, Max, is if, if, you gotta have a place to put it, cause if you don't use it within a couple hours, you ain't gonna move it.
All right, I, I wanna get back.
Problem that we have.
We're, we're wandering off here again. I want, I wanna get back to the blacktop. We talked about Bee Hill. Where was the other road you said?
Uh, maybe a shim on, uh, Oak Hill School Road. That's a thousand, that's, uh, twelve hundred feet.
Okay, so, we're getting close to a mile. We're not there yet.
So that's half as much again. So there's another twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand.
So again, a hundred thousand plus, okay?
And you know, it could be, uh, we left off on Burrington Road right there just below the cemetery. There's one culvert that's gotta be replaced. It's, uh, the concrete, uh, sticks up. They had the little box there that they put on the old state roads there. That needs to come out and the culvert push back and put in the ground a little deeper and a little ditch in there. You could, uh, probably blacktop that and, or at least you're just going over top of, uh, eight inches of concrete and two inches of, the three or four inches asphalt, depending how much is there. Some spots, there's more asphalt than others.
So you get up to where you did the blacktop in last year is what you're saying? So you'd have a section of it done?
Yeah, there's actually one other culvert just above the driveway to the, the cemetery on the upper part. There's one that crosses the road right there too.
Yeah, but if you did that, then you'd basically be from the road up past where the, the major culvert that you put in because of the washout.
Yeah.
Which gets a good section of Burrington done. You know, it's probably not about a fourth of it.
Well, I tell you.
That's another, that's tenth, not even a tenth of a mile, five, six hundred feet, seven hundred feet.
Run, run, you, uh, uh, speak on this Burrington Road, will you?
Sure.
Uh, this is something new to me, but I think you've been, uh, beating this around for a couple of years now. Am I correct or not?
No, I agree with what he said on that piece there. You oughta take and continue up a little further. Most of the complaints have been, cause they all go that direction.
South or north?
South.
South.
So if you did a little more on the south end, uh.
And patch up the rest.
The people, yeah, the people would be happy and we, we continue working on it.
Well, I mean, there's only so much money. So I, I, that's why I wanted to hear something.
Okay, here, here's where, where I'm at. I'm gonna get this blacktop thing. Bee Hill, Oak Hill, and, uh, part of Burrington Road. And we have the money for that. You have about two hundred and six thousand. You'll have money left over.
And like I said, nothing has been done in front of the rescue squad since I've been, since I've been here.
Doesn't need it there?
It's pretty, it's got a pretty good wheel route down the middle of it, both sides.
And that lad road.
That's bottom of lad, yeah, very bottom of lad.
It's the, the only piece of.
Or this next time, along with the culverts and, and, and give us an estimate of, of where we're gonna spend our money.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and how, approximately how much. I know you can't pinpoint it.
I know.
Out of blacktop, I can get you pretty close.
Okay.
Okay. So, what, what I'm looking at. Okay, so what what I'm looking at though is from what I've heard from the board and you, Casey, tonight is that, again, it's the B Hill, Oak Hill. This, uh, small section of lad road and, uh, doing part of Burrington. You put that together, come in and tell us what that's gonna cost and what you're planning on doing, whether you're shimming some or whether what you're you're gonna fully blacktop them and let us know. Cause I think then we can make a decision on the blacktop and and I know you wanna do that soon so you can get your bids out because of the time of year. Uh, so let's do that. Now, on the patching that he's talking about. Uh, there's several places around town where that is. I guess, uh, what I'd like to do is, uh, you know, if you know of some and you know of some and I do. Maybe we should tell Casey then have him go around and give us an estimate on what it means to do that and how you would do it. Does that sound like a plan with a blacktop?
I know that, uh, not everybody's a big fan of cold patch, but, uh, you know, cold patch does have a purpose. And for those little spots like right by the firehouse right there heading since South Stream Road, that's the cold patch.
It's still, it's just a temporary fix.
Right, it's a temporary fix.
A short term.
But you know, it won't, it won't come out of there. And, uh, like I say, there's no spots big enough to warrant getting a ton of asphalt. To do a section there and to do a section somewhere else, cause you won't, you won't, it it it'll be hard in the truck before you get a chance to use it. Cause there's not, the roads really aren't that bad. There's a couple of hell, little small holes here and there. That's what the cold patch is good for.
Well, come back and tell us about that too. I wanna I wanna move on with from the blacktop, but.
The, uh, shoulders on North Powder Road, do we put the cold patch on? That's another thing that the cold patch is good for. That's, I wouldn't put asphalt that way, cause it'll end up breaking up. This stuff stays flexible and that's what it's good for.
I'll come back with that too, along with the the blacktop stuff, just so we know, then you give us some cost estimates and we'll go with that and then we'll plan for that for our blacktop.
I'll tell you how to fix the hot patch. Work faster. All that.
Lay it down.
I know, I use.
How fast will those trucks go from North Powder to T's Powder?
Better than that call and hope you're best.
I had to pump my two cents worth in there.
You know how those tires fly.
Well. Are we all set on, are we all done on blacktop right now?
Yeah, blacktop, we're done.
Okay, before we get onto the trucks here, um, last month we talked about the erosion, uh, before the bridge on White Oaks Road.
Yeah, I looked at that. It's just, it's above there. I don't actually know who owns the property, but, uh, that's, uh, somebody with an excavator.
Right.
Can do. That's something you wanna get into. I mean, I.
Is it something we need to get into?
Well, we should do something with it at some point. It's 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 not really altering or disturbing the wing wall. Or the buttments or nothing of the bridge, but it has eroded and and I don't know why they did it the way they did, but the bank is real, real steep there. When they rewrapped it, they stood the stop rocks almost right on top of each other to. For whatever reason, well, they should have cut the top of the bank back and sloped the rocks a little steeper, less steep.
So is that something you could look into, who the property owner?
It may belong to, uh, North Adams, uh, watershed. And they may not even let us work in, uh, even though it's in the mile.
Right, but I mean, if it's to protect our bridge.
Right, and it's also, uh.
North Adams been pretty good with us.
That may, that may be another stream alteration engineer kinda thing you probably want, need to take a look at it or Army Corps Engineers or somebody else. That's their, that's their watershed.
Okay.
But yeah, that's a, that's a half a dozen phone calls right there. I could probably figure it out.
Yeah, I don't wanna forget about that.
Yep. Okay, anything else? Okay, what else you got with the roads? Truck, besides truck, anything?
Mario, we're gonna, uh, make a day of, uh, trying to alleviate some of the roughness on Carpenter Hill Road. Uh, Helen's off tomorrow, so he's not, I mean, I could get the grader out, but, uh. I'll probably just bring some material up there and smooth it out. It's pretty rough up there, I guess. I haven't been up there. I've been on Skipperie, so.
What about Carpenter Hill West?
Can't even stay in the seat.
Can't?
In front of Rachel Mason.
That bad?
I'm telling you, I went up through there and I hit a thank you ma'am and all his shelves and the truck emptied out.
So. Tonight's the first time I heard of it, so it's, you know. I haven't been up that way to, and I usually get a chance to travel around a little bit, but, uh.
Yeah, I haven't gone that way.
We spent a lot of time on Skipperie Road, cause they needed it pretty bad.
How about, uh, Carpenter Hill West? What's the?
Was Carpenter Hill?
Yeah, where, where you drive out through there. Have we done anything there?
Actually, the road is halfway decent all the way through. At least the last time I went down through there.
I haven't been out there, so I don't know.
Gotta take a ride.
I've been hearing that.
I drove up there yesterday.
Passable, right?
No trouble whatsoever. I mean, it's just a single lane road. That's what it is, blah, blah, blah. It's, you know, it's, you don't go over at thirty-five miles an hour, but. You can drive up through there without.
That's all right coming down to the field, right?
Yeah, yeah, coming down from the top, from the orchard down, I mean, had a few holes in there, could be working the land up there, but. I mean, yeah, we get through there, are you?
It's not bad.
Have you been through, have you been through the cutoff there, the, uh, the piece of the high school did there, the narrow part?
Piece of high school?
Yeah, the CDC came in.
Well, they cut the trees and stuff back.
Have you been through there at all? Like, I noticed there's a new fence up through there.
Yeah, that's, uh, belongs to the property owner down there, cause I guess they've been dumping garbage down in there still.
Once again.
And they've been trying to alleviate from stopping and parking. That's why the fence is, you know, within four feet of the road. Some places even closer, but.
I went up through there for that thought in mind and because it was mentioned to me that there wouldn't be a lot of room for cars passing, but. I think they left some pull offs when they put the fence up. Looks it to me, cause I see three, four places where if you see a vehicle coming, it ain't like. That's a main highway. It's a class four thing.
You can pull off.
You can pull off and the fence is far enough, you know, it isn't, it ain't any closer than the trees.
Yeah.
And places just behind the trees.
What's going on? Two years now? We did it?
Yeah.
No, it's it's smooth going the other way there. I mean, if, you know, you know.
Yeah, you got a couple of water bars and yours.
I'm sorry, that's what.
Well, I'm just, I'd heard something about the fences and stuff too, so, okay.
Yeah.
But you can get down through there with equipment then if you need it to. Oh, yeah, that's the key.
It's passable on the bottom, man. Up, I only went up as far as Sally Donaldson's Field. Ain't that who it is?
Yeah, yeah, up to the top.
That's as far as I went. I went up and turned around and came back.
I'm the only one driving it, but, you know.
Dragging it down for us.
All right.
That's good.
All right, moving on. Anything else?
Uh, that's it for me.
How about the truck?
Truck, yes, we need to do something about the truck. We've been talking about it now for two months, over two months.
Well, last time we talked about it, uh, we sent Jason away to look at the bids and to, uh, get up the speed. So Jason, I'll put you on the hot seat here. What can you say?
I reviewed the, you know, the packets there. They meet what we, what our original bids were, our specifications.
I didn't, I don't know if these were actually tabled or the original bits, what happened the night that you guys left the shop.
Uh, uh, they, we just tabled them.
That clip is right there is Linda's notes.
Okay.
The red paper clip on the, right there.
Okay, yeah.
Right there is her writing.
I don't think we threw them out, did we?
No.
Nope, okay.
I forgot to call.
This has no bit of word this time.
Basically all it was, we didn't award it anyhow.
I have, uh.
Know what we were gonna do.
Right.
No decision made.
My, uh, recommendation still stands and for the simple reason is, is that you can buy a less expensive truck. Which is gonna get what you pay for. And, uh, we need to do something different, cause I think we're spending too much money on maintenance.
I don't wanna know.
I think it's important we talk about the five year warranty, whatever we buy, definitely.
And from what I can see, this has the best warranty. Did you read any of the warranties package here that goes with it?
Yeah, on which one? On?
On this one here.
That's, that's, that's the fifteen?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, you talked about the last one.
Yeah, the one was not available.
Okay.
Is that one of them that was in the bid?
Yeah.
You can only see the bids, see there, that sheet right there with all the bids were, prices. Go ahead while I'm looking at this.
Um, and this is. One thing I did was look up some of the GVWs.
You, did you, uh, have any questions on the warranties or anything?
I didn't.
The only, uh, you know, everybody's, uh, every truck manufacturer. The emissions, not so much the EGR valve, but from the exhaust, the tr- the turbo bag is warranted by the federal government. So they mandate to all the manufacturers, they have to warranty the SCR, which is the exhaust after the the treatment part of the. Exhaust and the DPF filter, which diesel particulate filter, which is collects the carbon. That's what gets burned off and then blowed out and then it goes through the SCR. That's mandated by every, every company is mandated by the government. And there's other companies that, uh, are, uh. Stating that they'll warranty certain items that are censored, uh, as long as there's no corrosion. Any corrosion that is shown, uh, is no warranty. And the reason why I'm recommending that, everybody's had a chance to bid truck. That's three hundred plus horsepower and at least at minimum a thousand foot pounds of torque. And every one of them but the them last that one and this one here, uh, bid the very bare minimum. Eight point nine liter, nine point four liter, trying to get, trying to use that displacement to get three hundred and thirty plus horsepower. So my, my, um. My thought was, instead of running an engine at two thousand, twenty-two hundred RPMs to get the thousand foot pounds of torque. Uh, this engine here will do it at fifteen hundred.
I'm gonna cut you off and say, move on here as we can. Basically, if I understand you correctly, we have a recommendation from our road foreman to go with the bid. That was for a Mack truck, a twenty fifteen GU seven twelve, of which the bid was. One hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirteen cents. Is that the total warranty?
No, it's it's this one here, it's one oh nine.
That's with the warranty?
That's with the warrant.
Oh, that's with the warranty?
Warranty is, uh, this is a hundred and six thousand, the warranty is thirty-four hundred and ninety-one dollars. On top of that figure right there.
Right.
This one is.
There's, there's, there's two, there's two for the Mack. There's the, there's the the higher and the lower gross weights. You want the higher one.
Well, the lower one is the one he sheet he's got in front of him.
Is that the one you want or do you want the other one? So I'm saying the right one?
The only thing different about them two trucks is you got seven thousand pound heavier rear differential and.
What's your recommendation? That's what I'm asking.
Do you wanna spend three grand more on a heavier differential?
Well, you tell us what you need and then we'll tell you whether we're gonna spend it or not.
I'd take either one of those, because those will suit my purpose right there.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna read them both off for you guys, cause he said either one. Basically, you got a a GU seven twelve. One of them is, uh, thirty-nine gross weight at a hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirteen cents. And the warranty is three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. The, then there's one with a forty-two gross vehicle weight and it's a hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents. And the warranty is three, three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. So the warranties are the same. The difference in price is a little less than three thousand dollars, uh, ten thousand less, right? Might get that, oh, and three cents, so, yeah. So, uh, with that said, I'll accept the motion from the board and then we'll discuss. You gonna get a motion, uh, in a positive to?
What are we getting?
Well, which one do you want?
Cabin chassis, right?
Cabin chassis.
Right, how much money are you gonna spend for this truck cab?
Well, this is a hundred and nine. Well, that's your discussion. First, do you wanna wanna make a motion to go forward with this and are you not? We can both know afterwards, but make a motion.
I wouldn't know. I could, I can't do it.
I guess I'd like to see some discussion first.
Well, usually you make a motion, then the discussion.
I'll, I'll move, go ahead.
Okay, I got a motion. I got a second.
You're right, Nelson.
You give me a second?
Second.
Okay, now let's have a discussion on this thing, cause I agree with you. What's the total cost?
Or which one?
Uh, which one do you want?
Either or. I I'm moving for either or. It doesn't matter. Three thousand dollars, I'm not nervous.
So it's the what?
Okay, I'm not.
Forty-two gross weight, because either or means the largest.
That's right.
Buy it.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Uh, in looking at the three thousand dollar difference for the heavier truck. Uh, the heavier truck will give you better wear and tear. And it's probably well worth the investment of an additional three thousand dollars, because the truck will last longer.
I thank you for that input. Okay, so basically, uh, you had some questions?
I do. My concern is our low bid is eighty, is is eighty-five thousand dollars. That was international. And the high bid is what we're looking, is what you'd like to purchase.
Well, I'd, either, yeah, either one.
Could we, could we, have, have we looked at anything in in the middle? Could we find something in between?
Well, there's, uh, there's, there's things that I take into consideration when, uh, when we're. Purchasing. I've been to every one of these shops. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why I recommend the Mack. The, some of the things like I mentioned about sensors and stuff. The other, there's a couple, the other, uh, truck manufacturers kinda scared me away from censored. Uh, uh, wiring harnesses and that kinda thing, because it's not under their warranty if there's any corrosion. Uh, the other one was, uh, an aluminum cab. I'm not really sure if that would fit in the salt. Situation as well as something that's steel. And like I say, you get what you, nowadays you get what you pay for.
So let me, let me summarize up and you tell me if I'm correct or wrong. So you're saying the other ones were a higher maintenance cost in your mind? And the, the, the cost difference would be made up to, uh, less maintenance on this one?
Higher maintenance costs as for the trucks that we own now. And and also in a ten year period of time, what are they getting for a ten year old truck or an eight year old truck? Fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. That's not a lot of money for a truck you just paid, uh, a hundred thousand dollars for eight, ten years before. And now that's just a cabin chassis, but now you've equipped the truck and in ten years, it's only worth twenty, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. I mean, I can show you things that wear out on the trucks that we have that should not wear out. Clutch fans, um, uh, air compressors, things like that, that are high dollar items. That don't wear out in a truck that is a quality vehicle.
Okay, and again, but I'm I'm going saying, you're saying that this vehicle is of a higher quality, it'll take less maintenance and be lower cost. Than the other ones that'll make up the difference in the in the dollars.
That's what I've seen, that's what I have heard, that's what I am hoping to accomplish.
Now.
Eighty-five, that's what I did right there.
Yeah. So basically, we're, you're looking at twenty.
Well, fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen thousand.
Well, it depends on which one. I took the high, the one oh nine and, uh, I've got fifteen thousand.
Okay, so, so.
So it could be, you're right, Nelson.
Twenty-five.
So, so if you spend a lot on maintenance, you can make that up pretty quick.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the other question though, I I guess I have is, this is cabin chassis and we're talking a hundred and nine. What is the total cost? You know, we gotta get a plow, we gotta get a box to finish this truck up.
We've got a rough idea what the box is.
There is a rough idea of exactly what it would cost to put everything that I need on that truck. And don't state that number.
I'm not gonna, okay. Okay.
And I also have a, uh, a, uh, bid spec sheet for. And I also have a, uh, a bid spec sheet for, um, for the equipment that, uh,
Did I step down to Ronnie?
Jason, get a chance to look that right there over because that's-
I did Linda gave me a copy.
Oh, okay. I know stuff is expensive and I know who's paying for it, taxpayers, period. But in order for them to get something that is gonna last, that we don't have to work on, uh, we've got an oh nine over there that has had some really severe issues. And it's just getting to be one thing after another after another and it's just not cost effective to have that truck. And I just don't, cannot see purchasing another one.
But I think, but I think you have to look at the fact too that that can happen in any vehicle.
Yeah.
I understand.
You can get that in a, in a, in an automobile, you can get it in a pickup truck, um-
I understand.
We've had many, many, and we've all, we've ever had international in this town, we've had, we've had pretty decent luck with them, haven't we?
Well, like I say, when we get back into the, uh, after I went through some of the maintenance records that I, I pulled up there from oh one or two thousand, I guess I first started taking records. And you don't change clutch fans on anything, uh, very seldom ever. And, and one of them trucks has had three different ones on it and the other one that is just like it has had two different ones on it. And air compressors, I mean, things like brake cans and things like that, that's just normal wear and tear. But, uh, in a ten year period of time, three radiators, air tanks, uh, two fuel tanks in an, in an eight year period of time, that's-
Okay, I'm gonna-
You're gonna stop me again, ain't ya?
Yes, I'm gonna. The bottom line is you're saying that this one takes less maintenance. Now, who have you spoken to that owns a Mack and operates it in a town to get that sort of information?
The gentleman that actually delivers our salt, uh, Warren Fane, he, uh, uh, he's, that's all he's buying now. He has Peterbilt, he's had Volvos, he's had, uh, Kenworths, he's had every different kind of truck. Mostly tractors and tri axles, but that's, he told me that's what he's buying now.
And he's buying them because of the lower maintenance?
One is, uh, the, all the Mac has really got a nice garage and there's, it's reasonable.
I got one question to ask. How much did it cost us to maintain them trucks last year or, or a maintenance bill for last year? What was it?
Uh, just the trucks itself?
Yeah, never mind the grader or the, or the loader or the backhoe or anything, just the trucks.
Well, according to the spreadsheet I got from Delory's, uh, it was over a nine year span and it averaged out to be about, in nine years, about eighty-eight thousand dollars in nine years.
So you're talking ten thousand dollars. You got how many trucks? Five?
We got five and-
So, I mean, so we're really jumping, you know, I mean, I gotta, I gotta say, you know, I, I just can't believe that if international, this is just me, my thinking, I just can't believe if they're that bad, how can they stay in business? I'll admit they might've had a bad year, two thousand nine or somebody, but I mean, uh-
The last five years has been pretty bad.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, uh-
And, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus or nothing, I just, I just think it's something, we just need to do some, for that kind of money, we just need something, to do something different. Uh, if we can get a truck that is worth, uh, a considerable amount more when we wanna get rid of it because, you know, the plan of driving a truck for sixteen years is just, is, is kinda asinine as far as I'm concerned because you, you, you end up putting a lot of money into a truck that's not worth that much. And now it's probably worth, if, if I was to put it out to bid to get rid of it, it would be worth junk, that's all you get for it. I mean, nobody keeps trucks that long.
Well, I believe in running them out myself, but that's my own opinion.
And, and that's the way we've always done it.
I mean, that's just my opinion, I, I ain't telling you what you should or shouldn't do, but I know that if you take a vehicle and, uh, because once you get, because they're, they're not worth much after eight, ten years. So why not run it another eight or ten beyond that and, and you got, you got something for nothing. Or if you, if you trade it in, if you trade it in, what are you getting? You just had ninety thousand in ten years or nine years for maintenance. I mean, I don't think that's, you know, you brought some radiators, they, they are working in salt and stuff like that.
Well, I, I assume that, I'm hoping that's only truck maintenance because here for your actual equipment maintenance in the year twenty twelve to twenty thirteen, your expenditures were thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
This year we spent thirty-five thousand.
But you gotta remember, that, a lot of that stuff is, is, uh, plow blades and grader stuff and, and backhoe teeth and whatever, all that kinda stuff. That's why I said the trucks, I mean-
I'm asking for a list.
Well, that's over a nine year span, eighty-eight thousand dollars, but that's not in the last five years or the last four years. Because we've been having some pretty severe, last time that, that truck was down to Delory's was twenty-three hundred dollars and it, two months prior to that, it was down there and it was, I think it was almost two grand for that, all emission related.
So, so in your mind, spending, spending more money, we're gonna keep this truck ten years and turn around and sell it? Or we're gonna, and get top dollar for it or, or, what, what do you think, what are your, what's your opinion, what we're gonna do with it? To justify spending that much spending?
Saying if we're going along the same plan that we're doing right now and we're taking a truck and, uh, gonna run it fifteen years, say, uh, maybe we'll get eighteen to twenty out of this one. Or in eight years or ten years or whatever, the trade-in value of this truck right here is gonna be a lot more than it would be for a truck that you're just gonna spend twenty thousand dollars less on.
Excuse me.
I mean, and, and the other question I have, this other truck we have, this is a two thousand and nine Stanley's truck. Are we gonna get a couple more years out of it or are we gonna be looking to replace that next year?
That's your call and when you start seeing if, if it continues to be an issue, a problem, uh, then, you know, emission wise or, or, or whatever, uh, we may be thinking about doing it something of that nature. And, and, you know, the other one that is along the same lines, the little blue truck or green truck or whatever it is, that's, cab's in good shape right now and even though it gets running the calcium all summer long, calcium behind it, not in front of it. Uh, it's not in bad shape, it's been oiled from the day one, we take good care of it. So that truck, we're, we'll get a few more years out of that, but, but, uh, uh, Stony's old truck. It's in the same shape as mine's in, it's not as bad, but the floors are all rotted out.
Well, they're old, they're getting old.
Yeah, that's run through the saw, even though it's taken care of. It's had a motor job in oh, oh eight, uh, the cylinder liners rotted straight through and of course it ended up watering the oil.
Uh, okay. We've, we've heard, we heard the arguments, what's the, I'm gonna-
I still, uh, would like to know-
A couple more questions?
I got one more question, that's all. I'm still hung up on the tandem, my dear. And I would like to know what the difference is at price between a single axle truck and a tandem. Because a tandem has much more value, they can get in places and drive out of places them single axles can't nowhere near go into. Uh, they got, they got, they could pull that four wheel drive one down the road backwards with no trouble, the tandem axle one. And I'm interested and, and wondering why, if we're gonna spend, I mean, that's a, that's a ton of money, I think. Of course, I'm the conservative, so.
It's a lot of money. I, I don't think anybody's gonna disagree with that.
And I would just be concerned with knowing what the difference is, uh, because in the price and because I see these other localities, they're all, they got a lot of them things around now, them tandems.
The state's got four and they got four straight ax, or single axles.
All right, all right, I, I'm gonna ask the other board members, what's your thoughts on tandems? Should we be getting a price or should we not get a price?
We have an idea what, what, what they're calling, we have, we have, uh, what Bennington just ordered two weeks ago. It was about a hundred and eighty-two thousand for international.
But that's with the, everything box?
That's, that's with a, with a, with a, uh,
Box, plow?
With, with a cabin chassis and a dump body and a wet, and a wet system.
And the plows on there too, I think.
I don't think the plows included.
Maybe I read it, yes, I thought I read-
There's no plow included, I don't believe.
Or did they not? Maybe it was just the lift.
You're looking at how big of a motor and all the other things, I don't, you know, I didn't-
This was, this was very similar, I mean, to, it's an automatic transmission.
It's a ten liter.
Four hundred and fifty horse.
Even the bit I was looking at, yes.
So the cabin chassis was one oh two.
That's what the trade.
Yes.
Twenty.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, one, one twenty-two.
Okay.
Cabin chassis, automatic transmission.
About sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay.
For just a cabin chassis.
Here, so, are you, is the board, am I hearing that the board's interested in getting a tandem price as well?
Well, uh, listen, uh-
I'm gonna call the vote on this.
Well, you can call, I probably won't even vote, so I'm sorry.
Well, you can abstain, that's okay.
Well, I'll abstain for the, for the reason that I'm not sure yet and, and, um, I'll, I'll tell ya, what's got me really is, um, I know, I know that Casey, that your, your, your heart is set on, uh, a single axle truck. That's the truck he drives, all these factors and what I, uh, and, and I don't wanna try to beat somebody to death because either we're gonna have a crew that is gonna start, uh, moving smoothly. I guess I've got one other question before, for me to think about is, uh, it's a truck that, uh, he plows snow with every year or has been for, ever maybe, I don't know for how many years. Okay, for sixteen, so I've gotta say that much. Um, whose truck is gonna get replaced next? I just wanna know this real quick or approximately, which one do you think?
Uh, it's an oh one.
Okay, it's an oh one, so what I'm, uh, all right, and that would probably be, uh, trying to happen, um, and, uh, give me a maximum year time, three, two.
But what about this oh nine that's giving us problems now?
Or, or that, well, whichever, you know.
They spent, uh, you know, near four green, so they're not having problems for a while. I don't know, it's, it's like anything else, I have no idea.
I guess, I guess what I'm really, I'm gonna, I'll tell ya, uh, uh, what I'm really trying to get down to is, um, um, Casey, do you think that you would have trouble to drive a tandem truck? Seriously, I just wanna know what, what people are saying here. I, I wanna know what kinda people we've got working for it. Does that make any sense? I, I mean, I don't wanna drag this on, I, I don't wanna go farther, for me, I mean, what these are, do what you wanna do. But, um, uh, and, and I'm agreeing with Ronnie over here that, that's the kinda truck that I would, I would like the town to have, is a tandem truck. All a third more fail down the road, uh, three up one man, only run one truck.
All salt from there to the other side, bigger roads?
Whatever, whatever you wanna do, I, I don't even know. And I know that, um, Casey could drive a tandem truck without a problem, I mean, I just know that, I just know that, right? I can't help that. Now, whether you wanna or not, that's a different thing.
Now, it ain't so much want to, it's whether or not I can go on every road in town.
Okay, well, okay, so, so, but this is where I wanna really go with this is, okay. And if it doesn't fit our needs now, when would you think one would? Do you, do we have people that could drive one?
Well, I'm gonna go interrupt you because I think the question that I'm hearing is really, are you saying that a tandem will not work for the town of Pano because of the roads?
I'm saying that in the later time, that you could not go on every road in town with it, I don't care who you were.
Well, it could possibly-
Turn it around on every, in every single road that has to be plowed in a town of Pano, you could not drive it on every town, every town out there.
So, so the truck would be restricted in its use? All right.
That's, that's, that's the answer we need.
Until we could get, uh, the end of Brooklyn Road opened up, the top of Mason Hill opened up, a bigger pull off on the top of Pratt Road, uh, a bigger area at the end of Man Hill North, Man Hill South. Man Hill North you could get turned around, you could turn around to, uh, milk truck, the other end you couldn't.
Let me ask the question, is it a turnaround problem? Is it a turnaround problem or is it a road width problem?
Yeah, a little bit both in some spots.
The reason why I ask that is because when I first got on this board, we had problems with getting the trucks we have today because we had contract plowers with very small trucks and we worked with the landowners to have bigger turnarounds so we could run bigger trucks on those roads. And if all it was, was turnarounds, we might be able to solve that problem. Because I think they'll allow us, if we can get the roads plowed bigger and better, have a little turnaround. Because we're probably not talking a big difference, but we're talking a difference in how we make that. So if that was possible, if the turnarounds were made larger, would a tandem work on our town roads?
Uh, some spots, it's gonna be a lot of work to get a bigger turnaround.
Right, now, uh, just to bring this up so that we can, you know, because I really wanna try to operate, if it's possible, to bring it to, to some sense. Now, the truck that we're replacing has only been run, uh, six and a half months a year. Okay, now, the truck we're replacing has only been run six and a half months a year.
Is that a true statement?
Well, the first, uh, first few years.
Well, maybe not, but, uh, but-
It's got seventy-six hundred hours.
It's a winter truck, is what I'm trying to tell you, it's a plow truck, it's a plow, sand, salt truck. That's what it's been used for, for numerous years.
So, so it's now haul dirt?
Since, uh, you know, I can only, I can't get a backhoe and a dump truck at the same time, anything else, as far as that goes.
Why not?
Okay, so you follow where I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, so the truck that we're replacing is being replaced uh, for a six month use truck. If you're, if the plan still stays where it's staying now, that, uh, where these trucks are, are, um,
Assigned to individuals.
Assigned for right now.
Assigned to individuals.
Because everybody's got like a position, am, am I saying that right?
Yeah, they're, they're-
No, really, I mean, everybody's kinda got a job.
Yeah, vehicles are assigned to individuals.
All right, so, um, now, and where I'm going with this is if, uh, if a truck gets replaced in the next, uh, couple of years, is, is that, is that the plan maybe? One of them old trucks is gonna go, be gone? Uh, which trucks are used year round? Who's driving the trucks that are used year round? Does that, will that help better, uh, because I don't know who drives what.
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather know what trucks are being driven year round, it's gonna be replaced quickly.
Yeah, okay.
Truck, uh, one and truck six get used all summer.
And they're pretty, are they the ones that you're looking, you're talking about this having all these problems?
The wall of them is, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And that's an oh nine.
Okay, so, so, so we're looking at a truck, another truck being replaced before long. Uh, if we look at it that way and then talk about tandem later, I would also urge us to start making turnarounds large enough now. Not when we get the truck.
Because I think, uh, the, the purchase of a tandem could be used year round. You're talking about buying stone for mud problems, we're gonna be looking at buying gravel here shortly.
From who where? I don't know, you know.
So I mean, I think there's definitely advantage to having a tandem.
Yeah.
In the future, in the near future.
So, so what, what I'm really trying to bring this to kinda to a head is, uh, um, and, and, uh, you can evaluate people, I'm not gonna evaluate them. Uh, I want somebody to say that, uh, uh, we have people working for us that, uh, qualify to drive a tandem truck either now or in the future.
Well, you just evaluated Casey as being able to.
Well, I know he can.
Casey, what do you think about your men or any of your men capable of doing that?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, some of them probably have.
Good answer. Good answer.
So, okay, but I'm, I'm moving along, I'm moving along here, okay, so, so we're not talking tandem at this time with this bid, so-
No, Ronnie is.
Well, Ronnie is, but it sounds like what we're, majority of the board, I'm hearing is, is that we're looking at that for the next one and we're looking to rebuild our turnarounds and stuff to handle that. So within the next couple of years, we're able to do that. And, and then that helps us also if we do get a bid so we can do that. So now I'm back to the fact that, uh, rather than- And, and then that helps us also if we do get a bid, so we can do that, so now I'm back to the fact that, uh, rather than keep rehashing. We've got a motion in front of us for a Mac truck. Is what we have right now.
One more, one more thing in this discussion.
Go ahead.
Is this, how's this gonna play out when you just pick, I mean, like, we, we sent it off for bids, are we annihilating everybody? Who came in with a bid?
What's part of the year?
It's part of the process, but I mean, you know, guys just say, well, Jesus Christ, we beat them by twenty-five thousand dollars, how much we gotta beat them by? Twenty thousand or something, or fifteen.
I know, I.
I mean, I could see it if it was a couple thousand, or if it was a local dealer versus, versus a guy that's, you know, on East Overshoe. I could see, you know, a couple thousand or five thousand dollar difference. All I'm saying is, this all, uh. What we're doing, is this all, uh, legal?
Sure it's legal, you can vote yes or no.
Nelson, we'll go that route.
All bids.
What's in the best interest of the town?
That's what you make your decision out of. Now, we haven't voted yet, so, so saying that, whatever you're saying, you know, where it is, we have to make those decisions.
Problem that we have, is that's why I said I probably wasn't gonna vote, too, I didn't know what to do, and I still don't, really. Um, uh, I really think that the person that, uh, came when these bids were open was here. And, uh, I think that if we wanna really get down to the nitty-gritty and talk about, hey, what kinda product are you selling? Uh, I think, um, he ought to come in and, uh, tell us exactly, hey, um. I mean, we bought, uh, how many towns, how many new, uh, international trucks did we bought, four, three? Uh, three or four, I don't know how many guys bought, I don't, okay, so, okay. And, uh, so then a whole lot of other towns in the community, and they, they were really hot for a long time, and, um. Maybe he ought to come in and, uh, say, hey, uh, uh. I'm willing to stand behind this truck here, and, uh.
They're all gonna talk at that.
Well, that's okay, but, uh.
He's offered five years bumper to bumper.
They do right here, every one of these right here.
Bumper to bumper on everything.
But, but I, I want him to come in here and, and, um, and, and give his feel.
Don't want this guy here to come in either?
Well, he can, they all can come, no, 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 that's, that's not what I'm saying. The debate was, the difference in money, and the reason why we wanted that, cause it was better, that was said, was said here. Or did I misunderstand that?
I think our road foreman said that.
Oh, that's what I meant, yeah, not, not me, not.
I'm gonna say the board is gathering information.
Yeah.
And what we're gathered information from at this point is our road foreman telling us that some cost more to maintain than others. And that his belief is that through the time that we own this truck, we will save the money that we spend. Over and above what the low bid is.
Right.
That's, that's. That's the bottom line, and the rest of this has just been sort of talking a little bit in a, a circle about people getting their feelings out there on. What, all these different trucks, and that, that's good, that we do that, but what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna. Call the motion, I think, because I think where we're at is. What I'm hearing is that, that we're probably not going to, uh, accept this.
Well, what is the motion?
The motion was to purchase this one hundred and nine thousand.
Just be for sure, I, I just wanna be for sure that that.
One oh-nine or one oh-six.
Okay, that's right, I, I wanted to be for sure of that, so.
Yep, so we leave it up to our road foreman to choose if you voted yes. But, I'll call the mo- motion, those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Nay, it's unanimous.
Can we make another motion?
Sure can.
I'd like to make a motion, we purchased the, uh, international.
Which one was it? Let me see the bid, so I can read it off. What you had there, the low bid, is that the one you're looking for? Okay, we have a motion for Delory's. For, uh, international for seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. It's forty, uh, gross vehicle weight, and the warranty is five thousand, eight hundred dollars. That's the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Gotta have a second, then we can talk about it.
Well. I'm not gonna, uh, I, there's something else I wanna address before we, uh, there's something else I wanna address before I vote on that.
Well, you, go ahead, make a motion and address it. Second it?
We gotta second it, and, and then, and then, um, because it has nothing to do with the purchase of this.
Me too. If you don't get a second, I don't have a second. Alright, no second, no, no motion made, uh, at this, uh, stage of the game, uh. No bids were awarded, I would, uh, ask the board if we are refusing all bids, and, uh. If so, uh, we can tell these people and inform them, because they've been waiting for over a month.
I'm not gonna move on that, uh, I wa- I wanna move that, uh, another truck in the town of Pano is bought, it's gonna be a tandem truck. That's my, that's a motion.
That's a motion, I get a second on that motion?
Not, not now, the, uh.
Oh, the, you're after?
Yeah, sorry, if this, if this.
This board won't even be here then.
No. Uh, can I step back a minute? This is the.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna lock in the money.
Motion at this sta- stage of the game versus me, uh.
Yes.
Same there, okay, here's what should be done, if, what you're talking about, Henry, if the, what you're looking for, there should be a motion to purchase a truck tonight. With the conditions that the next truck that be bought be a tandem.
If you wanna make that motion.
Certainly, yes.
Are you making that motion?
Yes, I will.
I'll second it, now we can discuss it.
Now I'll discuss it. Any discussion on that topic?
That'll give us time.
Before the next one's bought.
When we start putting road work up on these dead-end roads, that we can look at turnaround.
Whoever truck is, uh, gonna, they can bite over us.
Alright, and the base you can make the turnaround, you can do the things you need to do, because we know the next one that goes out to bid has to have a bid for tandem. Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'm still thinking.
He, he already said aye. They both said aye.
Did you say aye?
Yes, he did.
Okay, alright.
Alright, aye, it's unanimous, could you please let Delory know that they won their bid? In case he, uh.
No, no.
Now, Casey, now Casey, what you need to do is go to the next step and get the bid out to finish that truck.
How did you purchase by Delory's truck with this motion?
He just made a motion to purchase Delory's truck with seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
No, 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 Delory's, Delory's, yes, yes, it was said that.
With the next truck being purchased will be a tandem.
But with the condition, right.
Okay. Now what we need is Casey to go out to bid to finish this truck with the plow and the box.
We have those.
We have the motion to have him do that?
And make that motion, we, we put out the, uh, body, um.
To specs.
To your specs.
To, to his specs.
Okay, and that's to put the box and plow on it, so, okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I don't know who made it first.
I think he did.
Okay.
I seconded it.
Okay, there, we got through the purchasing of a truck, hard as that may sound. Okay, uh, anything else, Casey? Okay, thank you. Next thing is, uh, town office bond vote discussion, the town office committee. Has requested us to look at the possible. Time that we should be going out for a vote. On a bond for the town office, my understanding at this point is we do not have specs on it, uh, we don't have estimated costs or any of that. Uh, but we should think about it, I, I don't know if tonight's tonight, you gotta come up with a date, but I think we should think about it. And, uh, because of the timing tonight and where we are, and the things we gotta talk about, uh, you might wanna table this until the next meeting. Or you can talk.
What are they asking for?
They want.
I'm, I'm lost.
Town office bond vote discussion per request of the town office committee, they're asking us to come up with a date, should it be November, should it be next March? Should it be before then, uh, when?
Well, I think that first we gotta do is have the, have, uh, info, uh.
More information?
Yeah, well, no, we gotta know what we're, what we're bonding, I mean, what, um.
What the mount is?
Yeah, and, and, and where we're bonding it, or, or, or what's the plan? I mean, is that the only plan, or, I mean, everybody is, is, uh, here, there's a lot of hearsay, am I right?
I can't see, uh, going forward, but it, where they find, how do you vote, uh, vote on a discussion on, of a request? For a vote, when it's gonna be, when you don't even know what the price is?
Or, or we don't even know what it is?
I got no idea.
We have an estimated time, but that's gonna be in by.
Yeah.
Didn't they say they'd, they'd have it by August?
Yeah, they're hoping, they're hoping to have information by August.
November or March, is that what's left?
November or March.
Yeah, and, and if they cut, if they get to get information together and get it, get it to us by August or September, then we'll.
We, we, we should go earlier, I, I really, I mean, or, or.
You wanna have your public hearings.
That's right.
And things, and you, you, so, yeah, if anything, uh, well, what I'm hearing.
I mean, I, I definitely wanna be for sure that it's kinda lined up either.
It sounds more like.
Either for, for, uh, the November or the March, I mean, I don't wanna be in another year, that's what, you know.
I'd like to see it November.
If they can get us enough information.
If that can happen, we would do it.
In November, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I remember I'm saying, I'm, I thought it was the, the first of August, they were gonna have.
They were gonna have all this on.
Okay, I'd like to shoot for November.
Okay, so, that's, uh, the board.
Well, that's a feeling.
That's a, there's no motion by the board to do it in November, but our feeling is that if the informa- if the information gets to the board, so we can make. The proper decision and proper warning, we're, we'll try to do it.
We'll, we'll try to shoot for November, okay?
Sounds good. That sounds good, I think that's what they were asking. Alright, pay raises for personnel, uh, make the motion to go into executive session, somebody, somebody? I need somebody. Alright, Jason made it, seconded by Henry. And Linda, if you wish to go home again, instead of staying another hour and a half.